Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Today, the Board will participate in an equity workshop, and if the Board deems it necessary, a special meeting will follow. I now call the Board Workshop to order at 1:00 PM on May 26, 2021. Mrs. Bass, please call the roll.
District One, Barbara McQuinn.
Here.
District Two, Alexandria Ayala.
Here.
District Three, Karen Brill. District Four, Erica Whitfield.
Here.
District Five, Frank Barbieri.
Here.
District Six, Marcia Andrews.
Here.
District Seven, Deborah Robinson.
We have quorum with six Board members present. Also joining us is Superintendent Dr. Donald Fanoy, General Counsel Sean Bernard, Inspector General Theresa Michael, and Board Clerk Carol Bass. Senior staff members will join us periodically as directed by the Superintendent. Viewers and listeners can access the meeting today by either watching on Comcast Channels 234 and 235, U-verse Channel 99, or by using the YouTube link on our webpage at PalmBeachSchools.org. In the event that, the link is interrupted for technical reasons, please switch over to the TV channels. All Board meetings are recorded in their entirety and posted on the district website within 24 hours. We also offer a listening-only option, which the public can access by calling 561-357-5900, or toll-free at 1-866-930-7015. The meeting ID is 1-561-880-1124, pound sign. This meeting is being transcribed by a closed captioner, so remember to speak at a reasonable pace. Will everyone please stand for the pledge to be led by Superintendent Fanoy?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome any public speakers who are joining us in person today. While your attendance here at the Board meeting is appreciated, please be mindful of important safety protocols that the Board now has in place to conform with COVID-19 safety guidelines and school board policies. The School District of Palm Beach County supports the peaceful assembly of persons to express themselves regarding matters concerning district students, employees, and the community. However, if such peaceful assembly results in a disturbance, those persons may be subject to arrest or other lawful actions, so please be respectful of all persons who are present on school district property today. In an effort to keep all participants and district employees safe, everyone must obey all lawful orders issued by law enforcement, which may include remaining or moving to a specific area or location, lowering voices for safety reasons, or other safety-related commands. Please sit only in designated seats, do not move any furniture, and do not move about the room unless you are speaking at the podium, exiting to the restroom, or leaving the building. Please maintain social distancing at all times, remain in the designated areas, and leave the property once your visit is complete. School Police has been instructed to remove anyone from the meeting who does not adhere to these safety protocols and procedures, as I have outlined. Please respect this cautionary warning that in the event of interference with the orderly processes of the meeting, failure to follow the safety protocols and procedures, or otherwise disruptive conduct, will result in removal of the person from the meeting or other action. Thanking you in advance for helping to maintain decorum and the orderly conduct of school board business. Before I turn over the workshop to the Superintendent, we will first hear from in-house speakers, followed by recorded speakers on the topic of today's workshop. As I call your name, please come to the nearest podium. I'll call you three at a time. When you get to the podium, it doesn't matter which order you were in out of those three, whoever gets there first just take the microphone and please state your name for the record as you start to speak. Please watch the clock with a lot of speakers. We have, uh... We have 45 speakers today, so please be mindful of the clock so we can get through everyone in a timely fashion. You have three minutes to speak. I don't like to cut anybody off, but... So please don't make me do that. Please try and watch the clock and finish up within the three minutes. We'll start with Representative Omari Hardy, Chuck Ridley, Rory Geller-Monani... Monani, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. Would one of you... All three of you come up and one of you take the podium first.
It's having some panel issues next door, so they're restarting.
Hold on a minute. What's your microphone on? Try again.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Now I'm okay.
State your name, please.
My name is Rory Geller-Mohammed. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Rory Geller-Mohammed, and I am here today to express support for the School District's current equity statement. I am here speaking as a parent of a three- and five-year-old in District Three, as a licensed clinical social worker, a member of Organizing Against Racism Palm Beach County Alliance, and today especially, I am here representing the Palm Beach Unit of the National Association of Social Workers, also known as the NASW. The NASW is the largest membership organization of professional social workers in the world with over 100,000 members and 4,259 members in Florida. I'm standing before you today with my colleagues, speaking on behalf of over 500 local members of the Palm Beach NASW Unit, many of whom are also parents with children in schools in the district throughout the county. Not only are we in support of the current equity statement, but also here to offer our help in this work. As mental health professionals that work in various capacities throughout the county, including the School District, we understand how important the current equity statement is to ensure that the district is working towards racial equity, for students, and actively doing the work to dismantle racism and other systems of oppression and inequity. As social work professionals that work with children, youth, adults, and families, we wholeheartedly support the School District's statement and commitment, as you have written it, to dismantle structures rooted in white advantage and transform our systems by hearing and elevating underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, and redistributing resources to provide equitable outcomes. We know from experience how important this is for the education and well-being of the children and youth in our county. In closing, as a parent, mental health clinician, and as a representative, speaking on behalf of the over 500 members of the Palm Beach County Unit of the National Association of Social Workers, we not only urge you to keep the current equity statement, but we are also inspired by it and are here to support you in our community and living up to it. Thank you. I'm also a member of the Organizing Against Racism Palm Beach County Alliance, and we're calling upon the school board to uphold the current mission and vision statement, which is a representation to the commitment of equity for student success. The Organizing Against Racism Palm Beach County Alliance is a network of more than 250 individuals representing residents, parents, nonprofit organizations, service providers, educational institutions, businesses, and governments, to name a few across the county who want to support each other while deepening our understanding of how to be effective anti-racist. We have come together to develop awareness around how racism lives in each of us and in our institutions, so we can be strong, organized, and clear in our efforts to dismantle racism. Thank you.
Thank you.
To the Board Chair, the Board itself, Superintendent, my name is Chuck Ridley, and I represent today the Coalition for Black Student Achievement. For those who are not aware of who the Coalition is, our mission and purpose is in our name, and we take that and make that statement unapologetically. Also, I'm here to speak in support of the equity statement as currently written. I'm not really sure how we got here. So let me just start by saying the black children and families of this county deserves better than this from this Board. Your employees deserve better than this from this Board. And for God's sake, you as colleagues deserve better from each other. This is absolutely ridiculous. For over 25 years, the Coalition has come to this body advocating for equity. And in numerous of meetings, those of you who are sitting on this Board have pledged your support. I've watched this entire process, and not once did I hear from any of you any misgivings around the process and how you ended with the final product. In fact, I started questioning myself, asking, had I... Did I have a bad read on you all? Had you become to understand the very nature and impact of structural racism? Had you begun to understand how structural racism created genocide, created chattel slavery, stole mass murder, of folk who looked like me and folk who was here long before any of us got here? And I've sat through and watched you, as a Board, challenged when the statement was made by one of your employees, and that man lost his career, and I saw the passion. But I wasn't wrong. You are exactly who I thought you were. And oftentimes, you accuse me of calling you racist. I've never called you racist at a school board meeting. That don't mean I haven't called you racist. Just didn't do it at a school board meeting. At school board meetings, I call you cowards because you will not stand, and I've seen you cave too often, to powerful interest. So to the remaining of the community, nobody is going to come save us. So we invite each of you who want to fight for equity for children to join the Coalition for Black Student Achievement this Saturday. Look on our website, find us, and we're going to tell you how we're going to organize to end this nonsense.
After Representative Hardy, I'll call three more names. Be ready, please. Megan Bell, Anita Winkus, and George Borowski. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, well, first off, thank you guys for recognizing me and forgiving me the three minutes during this meeting. My mother retired a few years ago after a three-decade-long career in education. She taught history, and so when we did things as a family, history education was often infused into it. Going into the third grade that summer, we had a vacation. We went up all the way up the East Coast. We stopped in some cities, Savannah, Colonial Williamsburg. And in Williamsburg, I bought... I bought a toy musket. It was the kind of musket you could hold in your hand, but it was very realistic. And we had brought our cousins along, and so I was playing with my cousin with this toy musket. And my mom saw us, and she was across the room. She rushed over and said, "Oh, no," took the toy musket from me and put it in her purse, and I didn't see that for the rest of the vacation. And I asked her, I said, "Why are you taking my toy?" And she said to me, "I'm not going to allow some police officer to mistake this for a real gun so that he could shoot you." Now, I said in my head, not out of my mouth, but in my head, that this lady's crazy. And years later, when I saw 12-year-old Tamir Rice play with a toy gun in a park on surveillance camera, and I saw him be shot by that officer, I realized, by the way, he was a little older than me, I realized what my mother was talking about. That is white advantage. White advantage is being able to do the things that children do, and for your parents to not have to worry whether some person looking at this black boy doing a child's thing, like playing with a toy gun, or walking back from the store, as Trayvon Martin was, with Skittles and soft drinks. White advantage is being able to live your life without having to worry about if those things will kill you. So as you guys think about whether you can combat white advantage without calling it out by name, I ask you to acknowledge first that it's real, that you can't fight it without calling it by name, and that what folks in my community need are for our leaders to not be faint-hearted about these issues and to have the courage that's required to do the work of ending racism in this country. That's all we ask.
Hi, my name is Megan Bell, and I'm here to speak in support of the equity statement as it is written. First of all, I want to say thank you. Thank you to the Board members who are sitting on the dais. Thank you for writing the equity policy that you have written. Thank you for your bravery, and thank you for naming names and calling a spade a spade. It made me very proud to be a parent of three children in Palm Beach County School District Schools. It made me proud to be a teacher, and it made me proud to be an alumni, to read the equity statement as you wrote it. Thank you for the time and the effort that you put in to craft that statement. It is very clear that each word was specifically chosen. It's very clear that there is so much time and energy put into that policy when you read it. Thank you also for putting the 200,000 children that are in your care in your hearts and in your minds as you make decisions on this dais, because you know that you are here to help the children to be strong, healthy, productive members of society, and not to listen to a fringe angry group of parents. Thank you for acknowledging the world that we live in, that we were all born into, that has white advantage. And thank you for your equity statement, which inspires us to build a better world for our children. We must name it to know it and to fix it. And the equity policy as it is written gives words and voice to the systems that we live in. As I was talking to community members and family members about this issue, people asked me, "But I know white advantage exists in the world, but is it really in Palm Beach County schools?" And I had to tell them, unfortunately, yes, it is. White children in Palm Beach County schools are 3.6 times more likely than black students to be in AP classes. And because you all keep those children in your hearts, you know that that can impact the rest of their lives, whether they are in an AP class or not. In Palm Beach County schools, black children are 4.2 times more likely than white children to be suspended. And because you keep our children close to your heart, you know that that can have an impact on the rest of their lives, their ability to get scholarships, their ability to go to college, their abilities to even stay in their homes. Also, Palm Beach County schools are considered highly segregated, according to national metrics, which means that black students are in black schools and white students are in white schools. That's not reflective of our communities that we live in. But you guys are aiming to do better with this equity statement. So I'm asking you to please keep the statement as it is written, because naming white advantage is good for all of our students, even our white students. Because if we do not identify white advantage for what it is, and we do not name it and acknowledge it, then we are taking away from our white children one of the best learning tools they could possibly have, which is natural consequences. As an educator, we know that natural consequences are one of the most powerful teachers. So please keep the equity statement as it is written for all of our students, black, white, everybody. Thank you.
My name is Anita Winkus. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a member of Organizing Against Racism Palm Beach County Alliance. We are calling upon the school board of Palm Beach County to uphold the current mission and vision statement, which is a representation to the commitment of equity for student success. We stand in opposition to the potential repeal of the recently-approved School District of Palm Beach County's equity statement. Now more than ever, it is critical to not only close achievement gaps that have long been burdensome to black and brown students, but to create a future where every student, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, identity, ability, and sexual orientation, and/or other identities, achieve educational equity. As a voting resident of District Two, I know that removing acknowledgement of white advantage only adds fuel to the false claims that the district is teaching white children to be ashamed of their skin color. We know that isn't true, and the remedy is not to remove the truth, but to educate on the truth. The truth is not divisive. The truth is not divisive. Racism is divisive. So thank you.
After Mr. Borowski, Kathryn Camino, Cindy Falco, and Beverly Becker.
Am I on? Okay. Hi, guys. My name is George Borowski. My siblings and I were born into a one-bedroom apartment in Brooklyn, New York. We grew up in the inner-city streets, where everyone looked different, but was born into the same struggles regardless of skin tone. I had to walk to school in fear every day because of avenue gangs. When I made it to school, it reminded me of my treatment here last week and how I was treated with no compassion for my opinion. Being met with political police force and metal detectors, my middle school in Brooklyn felt like a prison, windows with metal bars to keep kids inside or being thrown out by gangs in the school. It was dirty old buildings covered with graffitis ran by political types like you. The color of my skin had nothing to do with the fact I went to public school, even though it was hell for me on most days to get my high school diploma. The color of my skin had nothing to do with my choice to work three dead-end jobs, cleaning bathrooms and flipping burgers while attending community college. The color of my skin had nothing to do with the sleepless nights spent studying to get my grades up to transfer from community college to attain my bachelor's degree in economics. I always worked low-paying jobs while studying and trying to get my economics degree. After college, I was finally hired. It was because of the hundreds of resumes I submitted relentlessly and finding an employer to give me a shot. This was because of my effort, not my skin color. In fact, my boss... My boss looked differently to me. He saw me for who I was, not based on my skin color. He saw me as a hard-working kid who wanted this job and was going to do the best that he can do for the company. After college, when I was finally hired, all of my hard work was based on 80 hours-plus-a-week working. I worked a full-time job and started a business. I maxed out my credit cards to fund my business. I worked hundreds of hours a week in my full-time job and my business. I'm here today to tell you because it's not because of my white advantage, it's because of my hard work. The message that you're sending to kids is unfair. You're teaching them that their skin color's going to put them at a disadvantage. It's untrue. I'm an inner-city kid. I feed the system. What I see today is I see political hacks. I see something as an adult that I've never thought that I would see. I figured out that the path that you are causing for these kids is basically a path of liberal communism. I see that you want to talk about skin color. You don't want to teach our kids that they can do anything they can do and that the system isn't rigged against them. It's based on their efforts and hard work. I have no political affiliation, but I happened to look up all your political affiliations and find that most of you are Democrats. I'm not surprised. This is no longer the party of JFK. You're now the party of communism. You have definitely done a disgrace to JFK, and you definitely have made it sure that I will never register as a Democrat.
Kathryn Camino, Cindy Falco, Beverly Becker.
First Kathryn Camino. My name is Cindy Falco. Call it what you may, but it's the same. Black Lives Matter, Critical Race Theory, now they're trying to fool you with equity-embedded system. They're changing the word. It's all the same lie, and it all leads to Marxism, hatred, and murder. This is the theater of theatrics, and they are using your children to play the part. It's straight-up communism and hate. Hate your country, hate white people, hate anything that is good and true. They are teaching your children to turn against you, just as Hitler did in the time of communism with the Jewish people. Parents, wake up. Do not be deceived by the color coding that they're trying to do to confuse you. They think they can fool you with nice words and a play on words like equity, so you associate it with equality, but it's nothing of equality. They actually had a workshop on using beautiful words and talking to each other and how they can hide this evil and hatred that they want you and your children to act out. Here's a few samples. They use words like, "Oh, we'll use the word embrace," or "the joy of learning," emotional, affirm, inspire. You throw out words like candy to hide the evil that you are doing. As many have stated, you can't put lipstick on a pig and make evil look good. We, the people, have awoke to your schemes, and we will not tolerate one more minute of it. Deborah Robinson says, "Stop killing the children's dreams." I say to you, stop teaching them to hate and stop muzzling our children. They are not your children, and they are not yours to experiment on. Take your hands off of them now. Frank Barbieri says he wants to bring on board the evil of Marxism under the guise of equity-embedded system for adoption now. Really? This is neo-Marxism, parents. Look it up for yourselves. He wants your children. He wants to indoctrinate your children. He wants to teach your children hate if you're white or if you're black. I don't see color. I don't see color. I see human beings, because we're all created in the image of God. And if you keep buying into this system, parents, about a skin color, lighter brown, darker brown, white, we're all shades of beige, wake up and smell coffee, and stop buying into this evil that they're trying to perpetuate on you and myself. And who is this Mary Furtakis? Really? She calls herself the Educational Equity Consultant? This woman needs to be taken out of her position. And I'm going to leave my last words with you, but when a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing inavailability, the same objective events designed to reduce them under absolute deposition of them, it is the right, it is the duty to throw off such government and to provide new guards for the future. I am telling everyone of you on the dais, you are fired!
Kathryn Camino.
The equity statement, by definition, according to the School District of Palm Beach County, is the following. Equity means each student, regardless of race, ethnicity, poverty, disability, language status, undocumented status, religious affiliation, gender identity, and sexual orientation, will have access to the opportunities, resources, and support they need to imagine, nurture, and achieve their dreams. Let us break this down. Regardless of race, my example here is qualifying for the gifted program. If you are Caucasian and of median income, the rules for qualifying under Plan A, basically a gifted checklist and an IQ score of 130 or higher. If you are not Caucasian and not of median income, the rules for you are the same, but they're Plan B, and your score only has to be 112. Regardless of disability, my example here is a personal one, as I have worked in ESE for 20 years as an occupational therapy assistant and have seen many inequalities for children with disabilities. They have been left out on so many levels: school, field trips, school plays, inaccessible playgrounds, lack of scholarship and sport opportunities, nonverbal students literally have no voice to express even a simple yes or no in any format. Regardless of gender, my example here is one question. Do we offer every sport for every gender? Regardless of sexual orientation, my example here is another question. Sexual orientation, why are we giving equity based on sexual orientation to children ages 3 to 18 who are in school to learn how to read, write, and do arithmetic? Why is sexual orientation something we need to give equity to? I mean, sexual orientation is defined as a person's sexual preference. And as we navigate educating our children amidst social media, a rapidly-changing society, a lack of anything close to normal this last year, soaring human trafficking, and a billion-dollar child pornography industry, why in God's name would we even put that language in a public school statement of any kind? Sexual orientation by law in Palm Beach County? Here, I might remind everyone that Jeffrey Epstein was arrested for sexual crimes against our children of Palm Beach County. It is a crime for any child under the age of 18 to legally consent to sexual activity. Again, let me ask, why are we talking about sexual preferences as it is related to public school education servicing children, all of whom are under the age of legal consent? It is one thing to come up with statements, policies, procedures, and plans. It is a whole other thing to actually implement them and follow them. And I personally feel we need less statements, policies, procedures, and plans. We need to be kind humans that help all children read, write, and learn arithmetic, because this is school. because this is school.
I'm not sure if that was Kathryn Camino or Beverly Becker. She didn't state her name. So Beverly Becker, if you haven't spoken, come up to the podium. If you were Kathryn Camino and you haven't spoken, please come up. Seeing neither one of you, I'll call three more. Alana Monath, Edward Delezlo, and Greg LeBod.
Hello?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name's Alana Monath. Do not mistake our past silence for acquiesce. You were voted and entrusted to speak on behalf of the people, our children, but it is clear you are not fulfilling your job duties and your oath of office. Last week's meeting, Mr. Barbary said he had no idea what CRT was, Create Critical Race Theory.
Oh, my God.
...believed since you have been an elected official for the school board since 2008 where you served as chair and vice chair. An excerpt from Hillsdale College. There are a series of euphemisms deployed by its supporters to describe Critical Race Theory, including equity, social justice, diversity and inclusion, and culturally responsive teaching. Critical Race theorists, masters of language construction, realize that neo-Marxism would be a hard sell. Equity, on the other hand, sounds not threatening and is easily confused with the American principle of equality. There you have it. Equity-embedded school system is not equality and community unity. This is programming inciting division and the loss of children's innocence. And here we are today to address the statement of the curriculum you are trying to shove down people's throats under the guise of repetitive descriptive jargon used to placate people so they are confused by what seems to sound good but don't have the common sense to question it. Governor DeSantis said last week, if you put lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig, no matter what verbiage you use or change to make it more palatable for the public to agree. We know what this curriculum is all about. Look at the district organizational chart. The students, parents, and community of Palm Beach County are at top. Therefore, reiterating what the Florida Constitution states, Article 1, Section 1, all political powers inherent in the people. We, the people, decide and choose, not you. Florida Constitution 2.01 confirms Florida is a common law state. John Adams said, "A constitution of government, once changed from freedom, can never be restored. Liberty, once lost, is lost forever." Martin Luther King Jr. said, "I look to a day when people will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the contact of their character." This is what we want taught, not anti-Americanism, indoctrinating equity CRT crap and not programs funded by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. It's time to play whack-a-mole in Palm Beach County Governor DeSantis. The time is now. I yield my time. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir. State your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Adolozal and I thank you, quite frankly, Board, for awakening the spirit of we, the people, in this county. You have no idea what you have done and I'm grateful for it. I'm here to object to the community, the CRT curriculum, the Critical Race curriculum. It is divisive and creates rancor, not cooperation and respect for one another. I demand you immediately drop and stop this indoctrination of our children. They're our children, not yours. I recommend you institute intense civics training based on the Bill of Rights in our constitutions. You may want to reread this. Next, I'd like to address Mr. Barbary's arrogance for not recognizing that we, the people, allow you to serve with our consent, ours, not yours. And we can withdraw it at any time. Look at your organizational chart, by the way. The Board reports to who? We, the people. That's us. Also, I'm surprised to see Ms. Ayala at this meeting because it's apparently been revealed that she does not live in the district she says she represents. It's an effrontery that can't be tolerated. I urge the Board to deal with this conflict and do it immediately. Lastly, drop indoctrination and return to education and civics. Oh, and by the way, as was said by the previous speaker, the governor is going to be addressing this whole Critical Race Theory and will be very aggressive. I yield my time.
Mr. Chairman, point of information, please.
Go ahead, Ms. Ayala.
Could we please ask all speakers moving forward to refrain from clapping the rest of the meeting during speakers and after?
I don't think that's going to go over well with... As long as they keep order in the room while the speaker's walking up, I have no issue with them clapping as long as they're not hollering and carrying on. I don't know what's going on in that other room over there. The police officer needs to keep those people under control over there because it cuts out the microphone. Please take care of that. Go ahead, sir. State your name for the record.
Before I start my speech, does anyone want to make any generalizations about me because of my skin color?
Let me ask you, sir. Do you have a mask on?
Yes, I do. My name is Greg LeBod and I have two kids in Palm Beach County Elementary School. My wife is a Palm Beach County school teacher. It's definitely hard to muster the courage to speak today on such a sensitive topic. I'm worried about getting canceled. I'm worried about being labeled a racist. I am not a racist. But I have to stand up to people like you who divide us and teach the victim mentality to our youth. There's more on this topic that unites us than separates us. I'm here today because I just don't understand how spending all this time and energy on these racist and divisive equity statements helped our children learn reading, writing, math, science, history, and critical thinking. We're seeing other similar racist messages appearing in other areas of school board-approved documents. The Palm Beach County Gifted Endorsement Program has a line in it that says, "White teachers and white children they teach need to understand their position of privilege and need to understand the challenges faced by those who are less privileged because of race, class, sexual orientation, and handicap conditions." Now you put this equity statement in opposition to systems of oppression and inequality and about white advantage. But there's one hilarious fault in your plan. Racism is defined as a belief that race is fundamental determinant of human traits and capacities and that racial differences produce an inherent superiority of a particular race. Therefore, the people who made this equity statement is a racist. Unless you change the definition of racism. The hilarious part is that if you read your biographies on the school board website, you quickly realize how hypocritical this whole thing is. All these people fighting for justice and fighting this racist system. You are the system. All of you sitting up there, you are the system of oppression. You are the system of inequality and you are the system of white advantage. And how do I know this? Because when you add up all your years of service, you guys have a combined 129 years of leadership in these so-called structures rooted in white advantage. That's you guys that made that decision. If you were concerned about the children's education, you would have held two months of workshops for Forest Hill Community High School, which ranks 11,447th in the nation. Maybe you should consider holding two months of workshops for Palm Beach Lakes High School and their 21% reading deficiency and 17% math proficiency. Maybe you should have spent two months deliberating a statement on how the entire school district of Palm Beach County only has 53% average reading proficiency and 47% average math proficiency. Maybe instead of putting a virtue signal statement out, you would focus on things like correcting or putting statements out about fatherless homes or single-parent households. I was raised to believe that we are all part of one race, the human race. I implore you to avoid bringing racist, divisive, neoliberal, Marxist political philosophy, and victimhood mentality into this level of government. I implore you to focus your efforts on teaching the educational fundamentals that will help our kids on their journeys to becoming productive, patriotic members of society. We are one American family. We are one, one American family. We're not divided like you guys think. Thank you for your time with all due respect.
Cindy Eldred, Laura Chapman, Amanda Lipke.
Hi, and thank you for letting us speak today. My name is Cindy Eldred and I currently have three children attending school in the Palm Beach County School District and a fourth pretty soon. I'm a former educator and have a family full of educators, both current and retired. I am a product of the Florida school system. I was an educator in the Florida public school system and now I am experiencing Florida public education as a parent. A little over a week ago, as I read our school newsletter, I was alarmed by the wording of the equity statement. The school district of Palm Beach County is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantage. I have beautiful Christian children that embody all that is good and right in our world. They are loving, kind, compassionate, respectful. They have good manners, morals, and values and their teachers would all echo that sentiment. Recently, this divisive rhetoric has been spewed at them daily from all different outlets. My children will never be taught to be ashamed of or apologize for who they are based on their skin color, nor will they ever be taught to hate others because of theirs. After watching the May 19th Board meeting, it was obvious to me that several of you questioned the viability of the equity statement as written. Many of you indicated at the meeting that you were unsure of the bold and divisive statement. You were aware that it would receive pushback from parents, yet you proceeded to publish it on the county website without any feedback from your constituents. The school system is not the place for some of you to further your political aspirations at the expense of our children. Who facilitated this equity statement? What facts were used to create this equity statement? Can you predict the outcomes that you believe will be achieved? Are they identifiable? Are they measurable? Will you challenge all the students to discover their best potential for fulfilling future or just some? We need to make good decisions based on facts, not emotions or feeling. Who is accountable to explain all of the research and factual information that went into this statement? The Board needs to be transparent and define the specific steps that will be taken to redistribute resources and provide equitable outcomes. How do you plan on identifying and quantifying these equitable outcomes? You, as members of the school board of Palm Beach County, are responsible for approximately 190,000 students in our schools. You're making decisions on behalf of all of our students and we expect that no students will be discriminated against. Parents deserve to know to what structures would be dismantled and why you specifically chose the word white. There obviously are programs that you have in mind and have thoroughly researched in order to be so committed to dismantling them. I would ask that each of you clarify what you are referring to in writing and post it on the website, just like you did the statement. The Board's judgment is contradictory in its definition of equity and every parent should be concerned with your policymaking decisions looking forward. You can change the statement, but you already have a predetermined agenda. Here in Palm Beach County, we're a very diverse community. All different nationalities and walks of life are living and working side by side. You guys have an important task to ensure that students of all backgrounds
Ma'am, your time is up. Time is up.
...will be successful. Your decisions have to be better because your decisions have consequences for all of our children.
My name's Amanda Lipke. I am really here to talk to the parents, guardians, and students, the taxpayers, the true stakeholders in all of this, since you won't. We need to continue to rally. The governor is behind us and more support means less funding for this mess and more funding going towards actual tangible resources for our students and teachers. I think we all agree on the need for equality and the importance of advocating for all children. This is not equity. Equity is rooted in Marxism and the mission statement is filled with the exact same jargon as other radical-stool districts like Beaverton, not focused on academic achievement, but rather social justice. If we focus solely on two words like white advantage, then we are missing the bigger picture here. Because if you take those words away, this Board has still taken the leadership role on of creating a divisive and Marxist agenda for our kids. And even worse, in a year of a pandemic, they have taken an eye away from what should be the main focus and rather put that time, energy, and money towards CRT ideology, focusing on pushing indoctrination in schools by hiring a consultant from Washington State to work on this equity statement, holding multiple workshops at times that are not hard for us, that are very difficult for us as shareholders to attend, and also funding culturally responsive leadership training, which is their talk for CRT and is currently available on the teachers' union website for teachers to take. The Board has shown where their priorities lie. I am asking all parents to get involved. Please do your research at how crazy this stuff is. I know people say, "Here come the Karens" because we use the white word or we're talking about white kids. I have a kindergartner and a wonderful teacher. My kid, my entire family, we are all white, black, and brown, all of different religions, backgrounds, gay and straight. We know who we are with open minds and hearts. We aren't afraid to have the tough conversations, as you say, and raise good kids. Because raising my kid is my job. It is not yours. I am more angry that you are not doing your job. That is why I am here. Quit spending my money on this crap. Get world-class resources to the children and teachers equally. Set them up for success. You have not even peaked at this job. I would like to thank Megan Bell for the stats that have perfectly outlined how you have not peaked at this job. Check the reading and writing percentages. You're focused on this memo, why kids struggle with reading and writing. Why are our high schools doing worse than Miami-Dade? This whole mess is led by adults seeking some sort of racial justice and they're using our kids to get there. It is time for us to redirect focus and funding. Thank you.
After Laura Chapman, Jennifer Schewalter, Jamison Sotolongo, and Allison Rampersad.
Laura Chapman. Good afternoon, Board members and Dr. Fanoy. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I have heard that being on the school board can often be a thankless job, so I wanted to show my gratitude for the time and effort that you do put in. It's never easy and certainly not easy now. But my reason here is to make a few comments about the equity statement, specifically the line about white advantage. I knew when reading that statement a few weeks ago that it would cause an uproar. I study language and communication, such as meaning through words, implied intent, as well as the misunderstandings between sender and receiver. "Dismantling structures rooted in white advantage" is ambiguous phrase, perhaps purposely so. It confuses people. And when people become confused, especially when their children are involved, they become scared. And when people are scared, they become angry, as you saw last week. So I hope my comments today can possibly help you in the rewriting of this statement. For starters, ambiguity helps not one single person, not you as elected Board members, not schools, not parents, and certainly not students. Be specific in your communication about new policy changes. For example, a school board in Virginia voted to eliminate advanced math for the sake of equity. Agree or disagree, at least it's specific. When you offer specifics, you allow parents to form a more educated decision on whether to enroll or disenroll their child from the public school system and also who and who not to elect to the school board. Second, explain why you believe these changes need to take place. Why do you believe the school system of Palm Beach County is failing certain groups? What's gone wrong? And what about these structures? What does the word "structure" even mean in this context? Why is there white advantage in this county in the first place? Be specific. And this brings me to my last point. Rather than focusing the equity statement on those who you claim have white advantage, why not focus on building up the communities you want to help? Why tear down one group to help another? Is that what equity is? Why not simply focus on the people you believe need more help and more access? And tell us why. We want to help. Remember, please be specific. We're counting on you as elected officials. Thank you.
Again, before you start my clock, I've got a copy of my speech and I'll make sure to email you it. And I also have some documentation on numbers for the county.
State your name, please.
Yes, I'm Jennifer Schewalter. You want to talk about white advantage. Tell that to my speaker. Tell that to my son back there, who had to be pulled from his critical educational instruction, made all the more so by his ESE issues in order for us to be here, since you scheduled this right before parent pickup. I wish you could tell that to my West Virginia coal mining great-grandpa who died from black lung caused by coal dust. My father was the first of his family to attend college. He worked while studying, dropping out for a while to earn enough to go back, living off tomato sandwiches in an old trailer, growing up with hand-me-down clothes sewn by his granny. Privilege does not come with a color. Privilege is a false narrative. Success in life comes from regardless of whatever circumstance you are in. Excellence and achievement comes from a family and community involvement where work ethics and values like personal responsibility are instilled. We aren't living in 1863. We aren't living in 1963. We already have constitutional amendments and laws against racism. There are still problems yet to be overcome, but you are trying to deny over 60 years of substantial progress. Some of you spent decades on this board, working in education up to 44 years. So if you're saying that this, that there is this systematic illegal crisis needing to be eradicated, then that's all on you. Your assertion is correct. If your assertion is correct, you've allowed employees to act in a racist manner without termination. You created the policies, the procedures, and selected the curriculum. Where's the documented evidence that completed state investigations to validate your assertion of systematic white advantage and racism? Why can't the public access that data? Let's talk terms. Equity is not the equivalent of equality. Equity is a critical race theory term. Equality is providing everyone the same opportunity, receiving the same computers, solid curriculum, and proficient teachers. It frees us to use our talents and natural desire without restrictions, along with a strict work ethic to reach our potential. Equity, on the other hand, means everyone gets the same outcome whether they work hard or not, have talent or not. It's like a class getting assigned a test. Some study hard while others go out and party. They take the test, the teacher comes back and says, "Everyone has a C." Equity is teaching to mediocrity. It is not teaching to excellence. This is to distract us from your fostered mediocre educational system. Our pre-COVID 2019 scores were only 53% county reading proficiency. Palm Lake, Palm Beach Lakes High was at 21%. Worse, the county math proficiency was at 47%, with Boynton Beach Community at 16% and a vomit-inducing college-ready index of 28 out of 100, with Palm Beach Lakes High at 9. So how much are we spending on our education again? A whopping $3.8 billion? Where's that money going? You're teaching emotions, but yet the children can't read or write. These numbers highlight our kids are struggling with basic proficiency. How about you stop focusing on our skin and instead encourage and foster mindsets directed at personal responsibility and work ethic? The real question the board should be asking, since you've been in charge of the whole system for decades, why can't our kids read or do math? Parents need to be asking, why are these people-
Time's up, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Why are you still on the board? Thank you.
Not until I see me.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm waiting for everybody's attention first, please. Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Jamison Sotolongo, mother of two biracial children in the Palm Beach County School District. As school board members, you swore to uphold the Constitution in your application along with the state of Florida.
Ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Pull your mask up, please.
Can I get my time started again? I'll start over.
And pull the microphone up so we can hear you. Mark, restart her time.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Jamison Sotolongo, mother of two biracial children. As school board members, you swore to uphold the Constitution in your application along with the state of Florida. That means we, the people, are supposed to be considered one nation under God with equal rights for all. I sat and listened to your board meeting on 4/14. Ms. Whitfield and Ms. Quinn, you both really seem to like the word "embrace" being part of the mission statement. I hope you'll embrace what I'm about to say with as much compassion and intention. My sixth-grade daughter came home with a permission slip to watch the movie "The Giver" on Friday. Being that this is a board-approved book, I assume that you've all read it and know it well. When I spoke to her principal, he advised me that he had never seen the movie but approved its viewing because the board approved the book. I considered myself to be an informed and involved parent until Friday. I was unaware that my daughter was reading this book because it wasn't allowed to go home with her. For those that don't know, this movie is about a utopian society where the past was erased from everyone's memory. Sounds like the current cancel culture we live in to me. Obedience is demanded by the elite. The elite tell them what to wear, eat, sleep, play, and what job they will have. Women being forced to have babies only to have them taken away, raised by others. They murder infants by lethal injection through their brain if they don't thrive to their standards. War scenes with blood, body parts flying, mandatory daily vaccines to numb the independent thinking and feelings such as love, joy, sadness, it's what they determined in Semism. Climate control, a reason they claim to implement utopian city. Do you think this sounds good so far? Don't be so quick to say no, because in the book, they'll murder you for not following the rules. Head of the elite stated at the end of this book, "People are weak. When people have the freedom to choose, they choose wrong every time." Any of this sound familiar with what we're experiencing today? How is this embracing our children? How is this nurturing them to achieve their dreams? One kid saves the entire population and shows them the truth. Only in this real-life situation, it's the parents waking up all at once and fighting back.
Mask, mom.
The permission slip said it's to compare, contrast, plot elements in the theme in novel and film. Wouldn't the movie and book "Wonder" be better suited for teaching equality? Can you rename Critical Race, sorry, you can rename Critical Race Theory by calling it equity, but we parents see through this. We should be teaching our children how to build them up, not how to divide them with your rhetoric. You've allowed brain pop into our schools already, and it's disgusting. I'm not sure what else you have up your sleeves, but know that we parents are woke and won't stand for it. If you haven't heard yet, we're coming after your seats via recalls and voting you out, so don't get too comfortable up there. You're creating division, not equality, which makes you a racist if you support this. Shame on all of you.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Good afternoon. I'm Allison Rampersad, Ph.D., 30-years-plus educator in college business and technology in Palm Beach County. Critical race theory, that's what we're talking about. Not about history, not civics, not culture, not education. It's about, it's not even about learning literacy or skills development. It's pure Marxism. It's divide and conquer. It's rewriting our history, and it's unacceptable for our children. It's based in lies. Everybody knows that the United States didn't exist in 1619. It's undermining our children's future with indoctrination. It's dividing our country's citizenry. I could go on. Now, your mission statement on your website, "To educate, affirm, and inspire each student." What does that even mean? Three minutes doesn't give it justice, but I'll do my best. Let's start with educate. English, math, sex ed, history, pornography, usual stuff. Oh, my bad, I forgot global warming. Our children are force-fed misinformation daily. Carbon dioxide, it's bad, it's bad. It's harming the environment, it's killing the planet. Biology teachers, where are you? Humans need oxygen to live. We breathe out the carbon dioxide, it creeps, the plants take the carbon dioxide, convert it back to oxygen. Hey, oh, wait a minute. The children are being forced to breathe in carbon dioxide while wearing a mask for six to seven hours daily. So what? It's okay for the kids, but it's not okay for the planet? What kind of science is that? Next, affirm. What's being affirmed? You're black, you're white, you're Hispanic, and your point is? Mission statement says each student, doesn't say black, white, brown, just students. Oh, and parents? We'd rather that you didn't know exactly what we're teaching your kids. Will the real racists please stand up? Okay, on to inspire. Let's encourage the children by telling them they're victims, oppressors, good guys, bad guys, toxic, non-binary. You live in a racist country. Based on the color of your skin, you're never going to get ahead because, well, somebody's great-great-grandfather had slaves, and we got to have reparations. How the hell does that motivate anybody? What are you people doing? Please look at the organizational chart that I provided for you. Ever seen it? Who's on top? It's not you. Students, parents, the community, that's who you work for. I suggest you educate yourselves in Critical Race Theory. It's going to set race relations in this country back 100 years. Bottom line, this is not education. It's an agenda based on hatred, skin color, and control. Children should be pulled out of any school that attempts to teach this crap. Kids are not born hating. They are taught to hate. You can change that. Stand and deliver for our children. No Critical Race Theory in our schools.
Angela Salvatore, David DiCrincenzo, Jonathan Lauren. Ladies and gentlemen in this room, just understand one thing about the masks. There are people that came here today that are afraid to come to the building without everybody having masks on. That's why we're requiring masks in this room. If you don't want to wear your mask, we made arrangements for you to go to the room next door where you can certainly take your mask off. Please keep in mind there are people in this room that are afraid to sit next to you if you don't have your mask on or have you come up and speak at the dais without the mask on. So please keep that in mind when we're telling you to put your mask on. State your name for the record when you come up there, sir, and go ahead.
My name's Jonathan Lauren. I'm a parent of a five-year-old in Palm Beach County. The only way to get heard in today's social media-fueled society is to be offended. Apparently, being offended somehow elevates the concerns of the offended to a higher priority status. Well, the day has come where I believe the grievance I have with the school board is so dire that I'm going to utter this phrase. I am offended. I am offended that our five-year-old son is being subjected to a learning environment that is less concerned with his ability to read, write, and reason, but rather understands skin color and gender identity are what defines a person. I am offended that because of my son's skin color, he has assumed advantage. Therefore, resources for his education will be diverted to others deemed more deserving based on which checked box the school board deems more worthy. I am offended that the school board is so drunk with power that they believe they no longer need to hide their overt racist ideology. Children are not racist beings. It is taught to them by those in authority. But as a parent, teacher, be it a parent, teacher, family member, or in this case, the Palm Beach County School Board, the idea that someone is different than others based solely on the color of their skin is racist. This is what I teach my child, and I expect the people I entrust with my son's education to be teaching this as well. I am all for children having a fair shot at getting equal opportunity and becoming productive member of society. This cannot, however, come at the expense of my or any other children's opportunity. I will not sit back and watch as my son is tossed aside and deemed less worthy for the educational resources for which my wife and I pay, simply because he's checked the wrong box in the eyes of some bureaucrat. This is wrong, and the board knows it. This is why they have already backpedaling as we speak. It's too late. The cat is out of the bag. Your stance has been well-established. You can change your phraseology in your mission statement. It will not change the fact that this board has disdain for one skin color over the others. Our only recourse is to vote every one of you out of your position on this board, lest we raise a generation of victims and children that are defined by racial lines. Make no mistake, we are more than ready to do so at our first opportunity. The board's stance, beliefs, and behaviors are disgusting, and we should never be tolerated, period. With an annual budget of $3.8 billion, every child should have more than enough resources to learn what is paramount to getting a basic education: reading, writing, and arithmetic. At what cost is your attribution?
Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is David DiCrincenzo. I stand before you today in this room of maskless people, which, by the way, all of you and people like you around the country created this mess. But anyway, I stand before you today as a concerned citizen and as a former candidate to sit on the very board that I am now addressing. Now, I was not successful in my bid to be on that board, but I had an agenda then and I have an agenda now. And it should be your agenda. And that agenda is really simply this. Everybody sitting in this room, the parents and students of Palm Beach County, the parents and students around Florida and around our nation, you guys are dropping the ball with this kind of nonsense. You talk about inequity. You talk about white privilege. Please explain to Allen West and Dr. Ben Carson and Thomas Sowell and Candace Owens and so many other successful black people who didn't have so-called white privilege. They got off their butts and they made something of themselves because they're talented, they're intelligent, and they don't have to be told that they can't get ahead because of the color of their skin. This nonsense around America and around the world, really, it has to stop. And it's going to start right here in Palm Beach County, because you guys are on notice. Some of you are going to get elected out. I believe that some of you, by legal method, are going to find yourselves on the outside looking in really soon. Every one of you, as people have said already, should be ashamed of yourselves. And I do want to address something that one of the first speakers said. She said she referred to us, me and the people in this room, and most of the people in your room and around the country, crazed, angry parents. Well, you know what? None of us are crazy, because I think you guys are crazy for the shit you're doing. Excuse my French. But we're angry, and we get a right to be angry, because you guys are messing with our children. Parents have a right to decide how their children are going to be taught and what they're going to be taught. This liberal nonsense must come to an end.
Yes.
And that's all I really have to say. I'm going to, um... Yes, because-
That's disrespectful.
I'm going to get angry, and I don't want to do that, and it's not for anybody that's listening, but I will just say this. I am very angry, and I know most of these people are, and we have a right to be. And you guys are going to get the brunt of that. Have a nice-
After this lady, Reverend Paul King, Patsy Davis, and Jordan Smith. Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Angela Salvatore. I'm here to give a voice to those who are opposing the new agenda of Critical Race Theory, now changed to equity. Learning about this, I could not believe the subject in this agenda was about. First off, teachers have no role in teaching children's sexual preference. Secondly, I was horrified to learn that you want to teach our children that our white kids have advantages and are inherently racist, as you call it "white privilege." Our kids of all ages have a hard enough time feeling confident about themselves, and now you want to segregate our white children and tell them they are racist. Your program wants to classify, divide our children, and we are not going to allow our children to be treated this way. I cannot believe the very people who are serving the board and our children's interests are even implementing such a program. This idea will not only teach our children to hate one another, it also will teach our children to see capitalism as a bad idea and to teach our children welcome into socialism. You want a program to change history and teach our children to hate our country and to focus only on the worst of America, how it was founded. Your idea is to overthrow the capitalist class and bring in a socialistic society. This Marxism and this idea is aimed at brainwashing our children to destroy our country, and I'm here to let you know that we, as taxpayers, will not pay for your Marxism, socialistic, and racist program. This is not the solution, and we will not sit idly by. We can agree that there is work to be done on having equality for all, to learn from past inexcusable actions, and more can be done to help all children. Just a few ideas would be better busing or better choice programs for all families. But your solution is not what the community wants. It is shocking in how the board, with the exception of Mrs. Sanders, has ignored the voices of the parents and rule in your own personal opinions and political agendas. The community you continue to ignore pay for these seats and how the privilege is served, not rule. In closing, I need to say to the board who think that our schools are biased and only serve privileged children so that you're implementing this new agenda to better serve those who are unjustly treated. But why should we trust you with another new agenda? This progressive liberal ideology has plagued our school system long enough. You need to take responsibility that our problems we are facing are an outcome of this one-sided, progressive, and liberal control and has gone on for decades. It's time that our parents take back our schools and demand that our children once again understand and are taught the Constitution and to learn about America's core value. We need leaders who represent every child based on race, color, religion, gender, sexual preference, identity, disability, national origin, and every background so that all children will have the chance at the American dream. children will have the chance at the American dream. Lastly, remove our masks from our children now. Stop the abuse.
Your time's up, ma'am.
And Governor DeSantis...
Your time's up, ma'am.
Governor DeSantis, we need...
Reverend Paul King, Patsy Davis, and Jordan Smith.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Kane, and I'm here in support of the equity statement as it is currently written. First and foremost, I want to thank you for your service to the children, to the families, and to the wider community here in Palm Beach County. I serve as rector of St. Paul's Episcopal Church and Day School in Delray Beach. We have an after-school program that just celebrated its 21st anniversary, with 32 Haitian-American children enrolled, a program in which they receive dinner and tutoring and many other resources to help them flourish. I also serve as the dean of the South Palm Beach Deanery of the Episcopal Diocese of Southeast Florida, in which we have 10 churches and three schools. I am a member of the executive board of the Diocese of Southeast Florida. I'm also a member of the South Palm Beach Deanery's Committee for Racial Healing and Congregational Histories. I've served as a pastor here in South Florida for over 25 years, and on a personal note, I am the father of a Palm Beach County public school graduate. I'd like to share this statement from Bishop Peter Eaton, who is the bishop of the Episcopal Church in Southeast Florida, and this statement is on the wording of the equity statement of the Palm Beach County School Board. The Episcopal Church, under whose oversight there are 19 schools in Southeast Florida, including Palm Beach County, is very sensitive to the reality that we are living in very challenging times, in which we are managing a great deal of change. The last 15 months have caused us all to reexamine how we live together, how we relate to one another, and the values by which we want to live. The challenges of COVID have placed unwanted but necessary restrictions on our lives, and only recently, due to the vaccine, we are beginning to see a return to normal lifestyles where some restrictions can be lifted. At the same time, we have had to face the social reality that the killing of George Floyd has brought so sharply into focus, and the need to face the reality of who we are as a people and as a nation. There is no return to pre-pandemic world, either when it comes to COVID or when it comes to racism in our society. We cannot return to a worldview that denies the truth about who we have been as a nation and who we are as a people. We must continue to review our history and seek ways to bind up the wounds that exist between us as fellow citizens who share a common heritage of freedom, equality, and justice.
Reverend King, your time is up.
Thank you, and I'm sure my congregation would love one of those timers for my sermon.
Jordan Smith, for the record. Board Chair, Board Members, and my district's representative, Ayala, I stand here in support for the document in its current format. Thank you all for the hard work that you do every day in caring for our near 190,000 students, and I can't imagine the stress and sleepless nights you have all navigated this year, as you have guided our students through COVID and through the renewed conversations about race in our country. I have lived and worked in Palm Beach County in District 2 since immigrating here from Scotland in 2015. I work as a pastor and as a community activist, and I see the needs of our community firsthand. I am part of the Organize Against Racism Coalition, who you have heard from some of my colleagues today. I commend you for your bravery in including powerful anti-racist language in your report. The school district, as we have heard, states its mission is to educate, affirm, and inspire each student in an equity-embedded school system. For this to happen, students need to be seen and affirmed as beautiful and gifted just as they are, and acknowledges all the things that they bring into the classroom with them. How can we purport to provide our students with first-class education, preparing them for the world, if we continue to enclose a hierarchical system and a system that distorts history? We must acknowledge where equity gaps exist and call them what they are: the consequences of generations of targeted racist policy that disenfranchise these students of color, as it did to their parents and to their grandparents. White advantage frames this history in a way that acknowledges this: just because it is uncomfortable and we get pushback doesn't mean it is not worth doing. To concede would be a gesture or of deference to those who would ban any form of education that is remotely critical of history or of our story as a nation. We have to commit to being honest about our past and our present in order to recognize the dignity and worth of all students so that we may build a better tomorrow for our children and for our country. Board members, thank you all for the work you do every day and the time that you give to our county's children. I ask you to keep the original language of the statement as it is written.
My name is Patsy Davis. I have five kids. Three have already gone through the school system. Two are still in the Palm Beach County school system. Since we are here discussing the equity statement, I feel like we should probably look at the definition of some of these words we're talking about. Equity means being fair and impartial. Okay? So impartial means that you're going to treat everyone equally. Okay? Well, equal means the same. So a true equity statement means that we should be treating everyone the same, but you've not really written an equity statement because you're talking about treating children differently based on their color. All this talk of dismantling structures, transforming our system, sharing power, redistributing resources, providing equitable outcome, that's all a political agenda, and it has no place in our schools. You're teaching our children to look at social and cultural issues through a lens of race and ethnicity as opposed to a lens of hard work, of opportunity. They won't have equal outcomes. They can't have equal outcomes. They're not exactly the same person with exactly the same strengths, weaknesses, or interests. So they won't have the same outcomes. They should have the same opportunity to try to achieve those outcomes that they desire. We should be teaching our children to strive for excellence, not teaching them that they can't achieve excellence because of the color of their skin, or conversely, that all their hard work had nothing to do with what they've achieved because it was just given to them. I'm all for equal opportunity, but you don't punish and demean one group of children, give to another, and then expect any of those children to ever actually try to work hard or be the best that they can be. You're pushing our children towards segregation, where we treat them as part of a preset group instead of as an individual, and that's exactly how they should be treated as an individual. You're teaching them to judge someone based solely on the color of their skin. You're asking our children to call each other out and reject each other based on the color of their skin. We need to be uniting our children and not dividing them. We need to teach them to look beyond the color of someone's skin and see the person inside. You want my daughter to consider herself an oppressor of one of her best friends just because that friend happens to have a different skin color than her? Or worse, you want her friend to think she can't accomplish anything on her own or with her own hard work because my daughter has oppressed her? It's absolute garbage, and it is so hurtful to all of our children. Our children are a multitude of colors. They are all part of the same human race and need to learn to love each other and help each other. Let them work together. Let them encourage and strengthen each other. Stop trying to divide them and tear them apart.
Jennifer Coleman, Blake Hanley, Richard Vassalotti.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard today and for all that you do for children and families in Palm Beach County. My name is Jennifer Coleman. I'm a white mother of two white daughters. One is an eighth grader at Independence Middle School. My other daughter is a sophomore at William T. Dwyer High School. I live in Palm Beach Gardens, represented by Barbara McQuinn in District 1. Let me start by sharing I am in support of the board's equity statement in its entirety, inclusive of the language "white advantage." My husband and I believe, and my daughters who approve this statement, that it is of particular importance to make visible the unequal experiences families of color face in all of our systems, including the education system. Using words like "white advantage" are critical to achieving the goals in the equity statement: all students reach personal and academic success. White advantage may be difficult for white people to hear at first, which we've heard today. It was for me, but when I truly tried to understand its meaning, I realized the truth of my advantages. Peggy McIntosh's Unpacking the Invisible knapsack lists experiences that reflect white advantage, and unfortunately, my black and brown coworkers, friends, acquaintances cannot count on most of these conditions. My white skin affords me these same advantages. Like, if I should need to move, I can be pretty sure of renting or purchasing housing in an area that I can afford and I would want to live. And I can be pretty sure that my neighbors will be neutral or pleasant to me. I can go shopping alone most of the time, pretty well assured that I won't be followed or harassed. When I'm told about our national heritage or about civilization, I am shown that people of my color made it what it is. I can be sure that my children will be given curricular materials that testify to the existence of their race. Whether I use checks, credits, or cash, I can count on my skin color not to work against the appearance of financial reliability. I can arrange to protect my children most of the time from people who might not like them. I can swear, or I can dress in second-hand clothes, or not answer letters without having attribute these choices to the bad morals, the poverty, or the illiteracy of my race. I can speak in public today to a powerful group without putting my race on trial. I can do well in a challenging situation without being called a credit to my race. I am never asked to speak for all of the people of my racial group. I can criticize our government and talk about how much I fear its policies and behavior without being seen as a cultural outsider. I can be pretty sure that if I ask to talk to the person in charge, I'll be facing a person of my race. If a traffic cop pulls me over, or if the IRS audits my tax return, I can be sure I haven't been singled out because of my race. I can take a job with an affirmative action employer without having coworkers on the job suspect that I got it because of my race. So I respectfully request the board to keep the equity statement as it is currently written so that we can move towards a just future for all of our children in Palm Beach County.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Blake Hanley. I am an attorney, a member of Organizing Against Racism Palm Beach County, and I am here as a new parent of a one-year-old child who we would like to attend Palm Beach School System in District 4. I would like to applaud the board's equity statement as originally written, including the phrase "The board is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantage." I thank you for your courage in writing this. You all knew you would face backlash as a result of writing this, but you stood on the side of truth and on the side of all of our children. The term "white advantage" acknowledges the problem. As the board is aware, the national and local research and data time and time again show disparities by race in almost every area of life, including our educational system, where we consistently see far better results for those who are white, like myself. White people of goodwill may think acknowledging this fact itself is divisive, and speaking about the truth often is. But I believe we must acknowledge the fact of white advantage in order to end systemic racism in our schools and do better for black and brown students. Furthermore, white advantage does not mean that we white people do not have any disadvantages. It just means that white people are not disadvantaged by their race. And we must be able to talk about race. We must acknowledge the past and the realities of our present in order to create a new future for all of our children. I ask you keep the original language as written. Thank you.
After Richard Vassalotti, Michelle Gross, Emmy Kenny, and Karen Holm.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Emmy Kenny, and I serve on the district's Diversity and Equity Committee on behalf of the Palm Beach County Human Rights Council. I also taught in the district for a few years, and I was a student in the district as well, so I care about it deeply. And I'm here to weigh in on this issue because that's what the Diversity and Equity Committee is for, to weigh in on issues exactly like this, and I am urging you to stand by the statement that you carefully wrote and passed. So I'm not going to stand here and try to prove to you that racism or white advantage is real because you know that it is, and I'm not here to convince any parents of anything because I think that would take longer than three minutes. But I am here to remind you of this: working towards equity is never easy. There will always be resistance. When school boards desegregated schools in the '60s, there were a lot of angry parents who did not want that to happen. Luckily, that didn't stop that from happening, and we're at a moment in history where we are pushing towards equity, and there will be resistance, but you didn't put out this statement because someone said it was going to be easy. You did it because it's the right thing to do. So you have the facts, you have the stats that show you that there are major inequities in this district, and I applaud you for taking those head-on. And I would just like to echo what other people have said, where the language in this equity statement is not creating division because the division is already there. The division is just being named, and that's tough. When we have to confront racism, when we have to confront these difficult truths about our society, it makes us scared, it makes us have to reckon with things, reckon things within ourselves, and that's not easy to do. So this is your first test of many. The decision you make today is going to send a message to all of the teachers, your staff, your students, and their families. It's either going to say that you take this equity statement seriously and you're willing to make the difficult choices to make those words, actions, and make real change happen. Or you can send the message that you don't really, it's another empty promise, that you are willing to bend to the will of a few angry parents rather than stand up for the thousands of students of color who need you to stand up for them. You can't fix a problem if you don't name it first. So that's why this is important, and I think that if you go back to the facts that led you to make this statement in the first place, you'll pass this test with flying colors. Thank you.
Richard Vassalotti. About me, for 30 years, I wore an American flag on my sleeve and a badge on my chest, risking my life to serve all races. I did it equally, fairly, and without prejudice. Now, I believe there is much confusion between these terms of equality and equity. NACE, the National Association of College and Employers, says the term equality means providing the same to all. Equity means recognizing that we do not all start from the same place and must acknowledge and make adjustments to imbalances. It's obvious that we do not all start from the same place, but it's how we start and which path we choose to live our life on, and this begins in the home. School district defines equity as... to live our life on, and this begins in the home. School District defines equity as each student, regardless of race, ethnicity, poverty, gender, et cetera, will have access to the opportunities, resources, and support they need to imagine, nurture, and achieve their dreams. That actually sounds like an equality definition, not an equity definition, as I mentioned previously. An excerpt from the equity statement states, "The School District is committed to dismantling racism, and I truly believe that every single person, wholeheartedly in this room and abroad, agrees with that statement or against racism." The next paragraph states, "Achieving racial equity requires proactive and continuous investment in historically marginalized groups who have endured centuries of systemic oppression. The District is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantage." So your first paragraph really sounds like equality. Your second paragraph is committed to dismantling racism. Then your third paragraph goes full-blown racism, blaming white people for the shortcomings of others. You have called for the dismantling of structures rooted in white advantage. Does this mean you want me to dismantle my children for busting their butts to be the best they can be? Do you want my children to stop earning the multitude of awards they receive each year? Would you feel better if my children acted out and got suspended and lowered their grades just so you can alter the numbers in your PowerPoint for today's agenda? No one will ever dismantle the way my family is, the way they are raised, the kindness and support my children show and give to all of their peers of all races, and no one will ever dismantle my children's spirit. This Board bringing the term "white advantage" into why some students excel over others is racist, divisive, ugly, and frankly, every Board member should be utterly embarrassed to deploy such a statement. Not every white person has an advantage, not every black or brown person has a disadvantage, and racism does come in all colors. Racism in Palm Beach County should be dealt with on a case-by-case basis, not a blanket statement blaming white people. CBS 12 also reported the other day, "This Board's intent to close the achievement gap." What exactly does that mean? It means suppressing those that excel in an attempt to boost others. Your equity statement is a goal this Board wishes to achieve. However, goals are to be realistic and attainable, and I truly believe that this Board, deep down inside, knows that this is not an attainable goal. Thank you.
Good job.
State your name, please.
Hi, I'm Karen Holm. I would like to remind everybody that the School District uses what they call "school-wide positive behavior support." For the district, PBS is a proven, research, and evidence-based method to have students behave in a way that is conducive to learning by emphasizing positive behavior and de-emphasizing negative behaviors. The district has been using this system for years and years. It says, quote, "promotes fairness, civility, acceptance of diversity, as well as mutual respect." Your latest equity statement, however, is in direct conflict with PBS. To illustrate your positive system, I'd like to tell you a story. My boys were about two and four years old when we went to play in the kiddie area at the Wellington Green. My boys were running and climbing all over the play structures and interacting with the other children. They were of all different colors, black, brown, and white. Then I saw the black woman who was sitting next to me take out a bottle of soda pop. Her kids stood in front of her and pursed their lips in the air as she gave them all sips of soda pop. My son stood right next to her children, and he perched his lips too, waiting for his turn. It was absolutely adorable. There was this tiny black, brown-skinned boy with long black curls, and my kid standing there as white as ripped cream and pin-straight blond hair, standing next to each other with their tiny lips pursed, waiting for soda pop. My son didn't see color. He didn't see a black mom. He saw a nice lady giving soda pop. It occurred to me at that moment that I had never taught him to see color. I taught him to say nice words, not hit his brother, take turns, play nice with others. I taught him character. When he got into the Palm Beach County schools, I still did not teach him to see color. I emphasized character. I'm pretty sure that you didn't teach him to see color either. He brought home all sorts of friends from school that were all different colors. My boys are adults now, and they have black friends, Jamaican friends, Mexican friends, gay friends, straight friends, bi friends. They were never taught to see color because they only see character. At home, they were taught to how to interact with all others. At your school, your teachers promoted this positive behavior. It was for everybody. PBS is positive behavior support for everybody. Your policy of using PBS promotes fairness, civility, acceptance of diversity, as well as mutual respect. I encourage you all to keep it this way and continue to help raise kids like mine.
After the next lady speaks, Angelique Contreras, Jaisal Moreno, and Amanda Jested. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Angelique Contreras, and I am a proud American of Cuban and European descent. We have a race crisis that has been created in the minds of people only by the mainstream media and a few powerful, yet feckless leaders in our government who must create a crisis to fix, as one does not exist in today's present day. Our kids should be learning about math, science, language arts, history, and geography. Among other things, kids should just be kids. They are really easily influenced in schools, and Critical Race Theory in essence teaches them this country was founded on racism, and that our whole system was based on racism. This is leading them to believe that they can't be more than the color of their skin in society. My question to you is, what structures in Palm Beach County were rooted in white advantage? Where is your data that shows this to be fact? The answer is, you have not shown us the data to support white advantage exists in Palm Beach County. Your statement that there is white advantage is, in fact, racist. What you are doing as a Board is putting politics over our children's education. You are risking the necessary federal funding that is required for our children to get the proper education they need to succeed by pushing this agenda. In 2020, this Board forced children to stay home and deprive them of in-person learning. In doing so, you are the only ones to blame for their decline in academics, not racial inequality. A part of Critical Race Theory shows how race has been used as a tool for those in power to stay in power and make money. If that is correct, that also applies to you, Dr. Fanoi, and every member of this Board. Critical Race Theory reveals how race has been used as a tool to create and exert power in ways that affect everyone of all races economically and politically. It exposes those who have used race as a tool for their own political and economic gain. What you are doing by highlighting this and pushing it on our children is solely to show your abusive power and position as superintendent and as school Board members. Your focus must be on our kids and their education, not the color of their skin and dividing them. And I'll leave you with this passage found in the Bible. "It is better to be a poor but wise youth than an old and foolish king who refuses all advice."
Go ahead, ma'am.
Good afternoon. I'm Michelle Gross. I'm a parent living in District 5 with a daughter who graduated from Dreyfus and a son who is currently a junior at Spanish River. As a white mom with white children, I'm here in support of keeping the language in the carefully-developed equity statement as is, including and especially the words "white advantage." I want to express my gratitude for the work you do on behalf of every child in the district. As our school Board members, you have a tremendous responsibility to expose our children to more than academic learning. You set the stage in modeling values that create a better, more humane world for all of us, promoting lifelong critical thinking and learning skills. Your dedication is clear. Until a few years ago, I wouldn't have thought to define myself as white. That's because of white advantage. I don't have to think about my race or my children's. The world we live in was created with white people at the table, white people represented in preschool picture books, white people making decisions about curriculum, in a system created long ago to educate white children. If we don't take specific steps to right this injustice, then we're not creating strong examples of learning from our past for our children. Speaking here today is completely out of my comfort zone, and that discomfort is okay because the alternative is far worse. The alternative is demonstrating acceptance of our current reality that contributes, that continues to ignore white advantage and perpetuate racist systems. I often question myself as a parent. What can I do better? What should I have done differently? Last night, I celebrated a win, and because I saw hope in a better future through the eyes of my kids, I knew I needed to use my own voice and be here today. They each posted on their social media support for continued anti-racism work on the day we celebrated the life of George Floyd one year after his murder. Let's all be real. Let's advocate for our younger generations, be role models, and face the unjustness of our current systems. Let's stay strong, grow and learn as a community, confront white advantage, and work to change. Thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Board and Superintendent. My name is Amanda Jested. I am an attorney, and I am a mother. I have two children in Palm Beach County Public Schools, and I'm here to speak with my strong support of the School Board's equity statement as written, including the statement that the School Board intends to work to the goal of dismantling structures rooted in white advantage. Recognizing structural white advantage is imperative to achieve equity, and it is not a moral condemnation of white people, as some have suggested, or of white students, nor does recognize it create divides along lines of race. To the contrary, it should unite us. There is a concept of white advantage that I think the Board, educators, and fellow parents might benefit from considering. I know I have as a white parent of white children. Imagine if you could ask a fish, swimming along in our beautiful ocean, "How is the water, fish?" If fish could talk, I imagine the fish would say, "What is water?" The fish swimming along with no reason to notice the water it moves through. Structures rooted in white advantage are the water. For those of us who are white, who are like fish in water, like my children, it is not obvious or even apparent to us that we are swimming through water. But that water is full of toxins and dangerous currents, overt racism, implicit bias, structural inequities. If we don't examine them and just keep swimming, oblivious to the water quality, we do a great disservice to all students. These things cannot be ignored by the people who they impact, and I would argue that they are toxic to all of us. Only white parents have the luxury of choosing not to talk to white children, like my children, about these toxins and dangers in the water. People of color have always had to talk to their children about racism and structural inequities from a young age. White parents have chosen, I think in some instances without malice, to teach their kids to be colorblind, and many parents have advocated that idea today. It sounds beautiful, but it's not, because it rests on structural inequities that treat white as the default. It erases the feelings, experiences, and concerns of children who are not white. We want race to not matter, but the unfortunate reality is that the inequities are all around us. The water is not going to clear up by ignoring it. That is why it is necessary, rather than harmful, to acknowledge structures of white advantage in the equity statement and stay committed to dismantling them. Thank you all so much for your time, your service, and your thoughtful consideration.
Mariana Blanco, Peter Green, Desiree Miranda, and Ms. Moreno, if you're still here.
Moreno?
Moreno. Go ahead, Mr. Moreno.
Hello. My name is Haciel Moreno. I am an alumni of Palm Beach County schools. My father worked there for about 10 years as a janitor. I came from Cuba when I was about under one-year-old. I know all the struggles, and I know that other people here have said that they've known struggles, so that means basically that white advantage doesn't exist. That's not the case. It takes a lot of introspection and courage to admit that you do have an advantage, and what are you going to do about it? That's the next step. That's very hard, and a lot of people are scared, and I understand that. But don't you be scared by their empty threats, and a lot of their talking points really doesn't make much sense to me, you know, bringing in Marxism and things that had nothing to do with this specific topic. I am in support of keeping the statement as is, specifically with the word "white privilege." Another thing I did not like that some people have said, I love that you guys included "gender identity and sexual orientation." I am gay. I went through bullying in Palm Beach County schools. I know how important that is. They took a shot at it as much as they could on three or four comments. Those parents don't care about students in Palm Beach County. They don't care about all of them. They only care about theirs and theirs being taught the way that they want them to be taught, so that they can perpetuate all their hate. Don't you... Please don't be swayed by any of those comments. Please understand that we need you to stand strong. We need you to please continue on in your mission for equity, because without you, we can't do it alone. We cannot. I'm glad that you put it out, and now is not the time to backpedal. Now is not. Now is the time to push forward. If all of these parents' students were actually here to speak for themselves, I don't believe that they would share all the same views. So therefore, you need to really, I plead with you, to please stay on this track, to continue with this statement, not make any changes. Everything that is in here is very progressive, and I know it's a bit scary, but this is the future of Palm Beach County. Palm Beach County is diverse. It has a lot of different ethnicities, including Cuban-Americans, and I think that we all deserve a chance at equity, and a lot of people are not afforded that. As you can see by the graphs, by the data that they posted, the scales are tipped in the wrong direction, basically. So please be strong. Please keep it the way it is. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Hey, please, please stop. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Mari Blanco, and I am the Assistant Director at the Guatemala Maya Center. I became involved with the Escuela Maya when I was 15 years old, and quickly learned that there was a gap between the community and the systems in place that serve our community. Suseli, 16-years-old, from Guatemala, a recent arrival who fled from domestic violence and poverty to reunite with her dad, is now a member of our community, facing struggles that the majority of us can't even fathom. As a 16-year-old, she should be focused on applying to colleges, finding a dress for prom. Yet, her worries are finding a job to pay her debt in Guatemala so the gangs don't murder her family, and to fix her immigration case in order to stay with her dad and be reunited. She's a bright child who is behind, because she's in a foreign country, she doesn't speak the language, and she's trying to catch up with all the other life stresses, stressors that add to her education. I mentioned Suseli, but she is just one of the recent examples of students who make part in the Palm Beach School District. Equity for Suseli Maria... Equity for Suseli Matters. Guiding parents through the school system is nothing new for us. And through the years, we fostered relationships with the schools in Lake Worth and learned from the staff and learned from the staff in one of our local high schools that the percentage of English learners to graduate are one out of 10, a 50% chance. There's no use of saying that we care about the students if we're not acknowledging all of the outside factors affecting their lives and education. Racism is very real. Poverty is very real. Discrimination is very real. The staff and administrators in the surrounding schools are nothing short of incredible and are trying to meet the needs of our families and understanding how we could bridge the gaps in the systems. Yet they are bound by the structure of the institutions. At the center, our outreach staff fulfill the indispensable role meeting and guiding new arrivals among the thousands of families that we serve each month. We have about 20 indigenous employees, mostly speakers of Gankowar, Mamam Popti, whose skills are in cultural competency, but for whose generation the school district could not enroll. What difference does it make if the teachers show respect for the home and families if people can't recognize the difference between unity and uniformity? Acknowledging the importance of equity and past structural failures of the school system is the first step towards reaching real change. We at the Guatemalan Maya Center stand by the School Board's equity statement and critical race curriculum and are committed to helping the school district in all the areas that we are capable of. Thank you guys for your work and thank you for having us today.
Hello. My name's Desiree Miranda. I'm here to speak against the equity statement. I'm Latina, half Colombian, half Puerto Rican. My husband's Cuban. Our country has come so far, so far from labels and segregation. The USA is the least racist country in the world. And the perfect example of that is Barack Obama. If our country was so racist, how did he get elected? Not once, but twice. Let's celebrate how far we've come as a country. Yes, our history is ugly, but what country isn't? Let's learn from those mistakes, not erase them. I am not okay with being labeled as a person of color. That's racist. My son's high school sent out an email to have virtual meetings to talk about racism. As parents, we have to check, we had to check off if we were a person of color or a white ally. I've never been so offended. Being a Hispanic American, being a Hispanic-American woman, I didn't want to check anything off. I'm a parent. We're all parents. I don't want to be labeled as a person of color and I don't want white allies. I don't need white allies. We are all one. Ultimately, we are a product of the choices we make in life. Instead of pushing this divisive language, let's focus on making sure all schools have the same resources, things that will actually make a change. Stop pushing victimhood. We are Americans. We are all one human race.
Peter Green, Desiree Miranda, Jill Wells, James Wells. That was Desiree. Mariana Blanco. Peter Green, Jim Wells, James Wells. You here? Myra Domingo, David King, Father Frank Loughlin. Go ahead, any of you come up to the podium, it's fine.
Hi.
Good, sir.
Good afternoon. I sent yesterday a 16-page paper on proposing a critical thinking course to unteach racism. And because we, I think it's common knowledge that racism is taught at home indirectly or directly through cues. And given the fact that teachers and principals meet with students roughly on a weekly basis for 10 months, it would seem to me that they could be a real positive influence as it relates to teaching critical thinking. I think critical thinking is, I think we all can agree, is amiss in today's environment. When, and I'm not being political and I'm independent, but for example, 56% of Republicans today believe that Trump won the election when in fact, Trump left office with the lowest approval rating of any president in history at 37%. So it would stand to reason, particularly after he fired his head of election security, Chris Krebs, the day after the election, when Krebs said, the day before, that the election was the most secure in history. So I think as a critical thinker, we can understand that there was not good faith by the former man. But having said that, I think critical thinking would also be applicable and helpful with today's problem of gun control, gun violence. Today, we had a mass shooting in San Jose, multiple people were killed. I think it's high time that gun control be addressed. And I think children are very amenable to thinking practically and without bias. And so therefore, I believe critical thinking, again, could help in that regard. I would also like to propose two adjunct courses in conjunction with critical thinking. Because as it relates to unteaching racism, and the reason for that is, a dialogue needs to be created. It just can't, we just can't have enough to say in our curriculum, "Stop Asian bias, stop Asian," these are buzzwords. We have to devote time to making individuals think differently. And in conjunction with that, I think, I'm 62 and I was born in 58, so I've seen a couple of generations. And I think what's also missing in today's society is the art of manners, I mean manners and the art of conversation. And I think if we can instill that in children, a better dialogue will occur, a better approach to potential employers, potential guidance counselors.
Sir, your time is up.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Wells. James Wells. Turn the camera on in the other room, please. I believe Mr. and Mrs. Wells are in that room.
Yes, we are.
Go ahead, ma'am.
First of all, I don't have any children in the Palm Beach County School System. Our youngest son just graduated from West Boca last year and was part of this homeschooling stuff. And that right off the, was a first-class joke. All right? They didn't do anything for him. And as far as what you're trying to shove down these kids' throats is this critical race theory, you're wrong. It's not your job to teach our kids about race. It's ours as the parents. Your job is to teach them the basics, reading, writing, arithmetic, and teach them socializing so they can make it in the world out there, just like we do. This stuff that you're trying to force down our kids' throats is not good. We don't see race as parent, I don't see race. My husband is a 21-year veteran of the United States Army. And I am a state representative with the Florida National Guard. I am Unit FRG in charge of family readiness, okay? And we do not see race in the military. We see brothers and sisters in arms. What you're trying to indoctrinate with our kids is wrong. If you want to play politics, this is not the arena. You get out of the school board. If you want to get on politics, go run. But do not shove this stuff down our kids' throats. You have no right to do this. You have no, you have no idea what you're doing to these kids. You're wrong on everything that you're doing. And I have one thing to say to you all. You're fired.
Go ahead, sir, state your name.
James Wells. You just talked to my wife and yes, I'm a 21-year US Army veteran. I retired in January 2018. During my time in service, I served with all my brothers and sisters. We had one mission, and that was to get the mission done. Get it accomplished and do what we had to do. We never saw race. We never saw color. We never even saw religion. We all saw simply we were brothers and sisters for all the same cause. Teaching our kids race in school is wrong. And it should not be taught at all. And with that said, you guys need to go back and learn how to, how we Americans feel, teach our kids that we all need to get along as Americans. Also, as a mask thing, I don't see a point that our children should have any kind of mask to be worn at all. You have no right to say our children should have to wear a mask. There is no physical proof of a pandemic. All of this is just simply over-exaggerated flu of you simply trying to control the American population and make us do what you wanted to say. It's not about control. It's not about what you want. It's what the people want and what we are. And with that said, the only other thing I have to say for you all is that you're all fired.
Desiree Miranda, Myra Domingo, David King and Father Frank Loughlin. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good afternoon, my name is Myra Domingo and I'm from a small town in Guatemala called Jacaltenango, where the most common language is Popti. I moved to the United States at 15-years-old. In Guatemala, only rich people go to school and have a career. And my mom and dad wanted us to have a better future. When I moved here, I went straight into high school, not knowing any English and not having anyone to guide me through the school system. My first three years were okay. But when I went into my senior year, a lack guidance on how to graduate or go to college. Senior year, I failed all my tests and nearly didn't pass my senior year until I re-took the SAT and was able to get my diploma. Right after I graduated, I began working at a restaurant where I stayed as late as 1:00 AM every day to help support my family of seven. I still struggle speaking English and I knew I wanted to work somewhere else. I wanted to help children who had similar experience to me. I began practicing my English by myself with phone apps and by watching movies. A friend of mine was a teacher and she contacted me about a position open at Lakewood Middle School in the school district as a Popti CLF translator. I was interviewed as soon as offered a position. The pay was really low, but I wanted to work with them to help the children who were struggling like I did. I started to work with the school district in October 2019 and they introduced me to a group of kids who could not write or read any English or Spanish. I had to work with them daily, from teaching them to write their names, to encourage them to graduate high school instead of entering the workforce at 15-years. I know we all work so hard to help these childrens out, but they lacked of support and it often felt like their system had forgotten about them. When I had arrived in the United States, my mom enrolled us in a youth group for teenagers at the Guatemalan Maya Center. So we had a place to belong. I had fallen in love with the program, seeing how they helped people out with everything they could. When I saw the work that they were doing, I told myself that I wanted to work with them in the, in the future. I need, I needed to provide the same services that they were providing me and my family. It was a dream come true to work with them. And now I'm, now that I am with the outreach program, I see how many families come to us because they don't understand basic things about their children's school or the education system works. Our parents know that the Guatemalan Maya Center is always here to support them. And we're happy to see that with the equality statement, the school district is showing that they were here to support them too. We need to make a change. Thank you.
Members of the Board, Chairman, thank you for this honor. I'm Frank Loughlin and I'm at the Guatemalan Maya Center. I have a history of 50 years of worrying about the children of the workforce in Palm Beach County and Martin County. It became a kind of a career. And at times, I've been a nuisance to you people and to the work you do. I don't know if you remember. Can you remember when a migrant child would spend three years in the first grade and never make any progress through no fault of their own? You have done miracles transforming the system. And what you have undertaken with this statement is the most beautiful and promising thing. You make an old guy cry. I was in next county, up Martin County, struggling for years with the school board. And lovely people though they were, eventually had to give up and found a little school. Do you think I wanted to go out and found a school separate from the system? I had to go out and found Hope Rural School in the county to take care of the kids. What you've undertaken here, we can talk all day about languages, languages of philosophy, psychology, modern science and sociology that we can use to talk about this. There can be arguments about the words, but there can be no arguments about the disposition of what you have undertaken. And there can be no argument about the era in which you have stepped up and done it. We need, we need all of us to do as much for one another as you have done for us here. We need to speak to the realities, the truths of our past and present and the future that is possible and achievable before us. So for this, I thank you and endorse you. God bless.
David, excuse me, David King, Carl Muhammad, Ezekiel Edmonds III and Charmaine Paulscho.
Good. Good evening, Board Chair, or good morning, good afternoon, Board Chair, Board members and everyone in your respective places, Superintendent and everyone in your respective places. I stand in full support of the equity statement as it has been approved. While I understand the statements that can be found within the equity statement, the work was done, went out to the community and then was approved. The reason why the equity work was done was not only because it was necessary, it was to change the precedent that is currently set. While I am disgusted, my notes came up, sorry about that. While I am disgusted that we are here today, I am pleading that the statement stay as it is. Appeasing one set of the community today without educating the community that is ignorant of the topic is dangerous. Today, one group will win. Tomorrow, will the opposing group have a chance? Tomorrow, will the opposing group have a chance? As much as we use the word equity, as much as we say we want to see the equity work, this is it. This is the equity work. And as we like to say, we see you. The rest of my time, I'm going to read a few comments from the equity committee, members of the equity committee. Sue Davis Killen, Gold Coast Down Syndrome Organization, and this was passed through staff. I would like to see the phrase in question, white privilege, removed, not because I think there's anything wrong with it, but because I feel that one phrase would distract from the very important work we have to do with the equity. Let's not give the racial inequity deniers any ammunition to sidetrack the efforts. Rachel Mondesir, in order to achieve the vision that the school district of Palm Beach County has, the children will be embraced, affirmed, and inspired. The school district must be steadfast, intentional, and committed to understanding how systemic racism has created barriers that are contributing to the achievement gap. The disparities that we are seeing in the achievement gap are from systems that are impacted by bias, underrepresentation, and unequal access to opportunities. Time to take action to dismantle these systems and structures that are rooted in equity is now. Kimberly Spare O., ESC Advisory Committee, I disagree with the mob and believe, as a privileged white person, that the original language acknowledging the non-white students face educational disadvantages and additional struggles should stay. Marsha Guthrie, West Palm Beach NAACP, we are at a critical juncture in our nation, our state, and right here in the public school district, we send our most valuable treasures, our children, to learn. This is a time where, if I may just finish this statement.
Quickly.
Thank you. This is a time where leadership absolutely matter and bold policy and direction is a must. If we cover now the pressures of doing what is right, what our children deserve, what we will tell them in the future. How will we answer the question Vice President Harris raised when she stated, years from now, this moment will have passed, and our children and our grandchildren will look in our eyes and ask, where were you when the stakes were so high? They will ask us, what was it like? And we will tell them, we will tell them, not just how we felt, we will tell them what we did. And I'll send the rest of the documents to the board directly. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Muhammad, Ezekiel Edmonds III, are you here? All right, board members, that takes care of everyone, I think, that's here to speak in person. We do have 70 recorded messages. It'll take us approximately 1 hour and 53 minutes to listen to. So if the IT department would start running those for us, please.
My name is Claus Bell. I have children, three children in the district. I'm a white resident of Palm Beach County, and I believe that we need to leave the equity statement as is. We need to leave the language about white advantage in there for the reason that I think it's important for the schools to take on racial equity in a serious way. And doing that requires being honest about the current state of affairs, because there's no way for us to move forward as a county, as a state, and really as Americans without acknowledging the way things have been, which is that white people have a leg up in our society in a million different ways. And I think, you know, for us to move forward as a multicultural society in the modern age, we're going to have to deal with that. And so I think it's important for the schools to face that honestly. So I'm calling in favor of keeping the equity statement as is, and I would not support changing it at this time. Thank you. Bye.
Hello. My name is Christian D. Cersei Jr. I am a resident of District 1 of the school board area, and I just want to call and make sure that you hear my support that I would like to retain the white advantage words in the mission as it is written. As a white parent, I do believe it is important for us to get an accurate view of history and not try to gloss over things that have happened in the past that may not be the most flattering to us. I think the only way we learn and grow as people is if we both understand our history and are willing to admit any mistakes that we may have made in the past. Nobody's perfect. It doesn't mean they are in any way evil. But the only way we can make sure that we avoid repeating the same mistakes is to at least learn what mistakes we have made in the past. So again, I want to retain the language as it is written. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jackie Watts, and I would like to speak on the equity statement. I'd like to tell the board that this is not an easy fix. As Ms. Ayala pointed out, all of you had agreed ahead of time to stand firm in your convictions because you knew it was a bold statement. Saying that we parents don't understand what you mean by structures rooted in white advantage is complete horse manure. To pretend that you don't know what critical race theory is is hilarious. You are either some of the best actors I've ever seen, or you have no idea what's going on in the school system across the country. Placing such a focus on the theory that white people are born into advantage shows white people in a negative light to children. And then going a step further and not only telling kids that white people are born better than you, but that you also have to take away any advantages they might have, is teaching kids to be racist. This statement that you added in there is racist. Last week, you seemed upset because you were called communist and Marxist, because the statement that you all put together is just that. Equity is an attribute of being fair and impartial, but it goes the extra mile. Kamala Harris, in one of her campaign ads on equity versus equality, because they are not the same, says equitable treatment means we all end up at the same place. She also points out that to end up at the same place, we all need to start at the same place, AKA stripping people of their individual rights. Now, systems rooted in white advantage according to your Racial Equality Institute training means that all white people have enjoyed special advantages since before they were born and that they are still reaping the rewards of racial preference. To recap, saying that you will be proactive in dismantling structures rooted in white advantage and then redistributing resources is at its core Marxist ideology. Instead of teaching children that they all have inherent value and that their character and virtue matter more than anything on earth, even their skin color, you want to teach them that their value and identity is solely based on the color of their skin. I can't possibly see anything more divisive than that. Lastly, I request that you please get those racist brain pop videos out of our children's lives. They don't need to learn politics at school. Moral development, if you cannot see the damage you are doing to our society by targeting the innocence of our children, I have no choice but to remove my three children from the Palm Beach District Schools.
My name is leaving a comment for the equity workshop meeting. I would like to say that I went to school in Palm Beach County from 1985 to 1993, and during that time, I have not noticed any structure that would not have provided equal opportunity for all students. In fact, there is and was plenty of guidance, resources, and opportunities for those students who wish to succeed in their own direction if they desire to do so, no matter their skin color, religion, or status. Do you want to know why? It's because they weren't told by the school board that they were less than, that they were oppressed and victims of society, and that one particular race held all the power to prevent their success in life. Achievement will be lessened among students with this equity statement implemented. In fact, just in case you didn't know, libraries still accept all people, and they are free, as well as many resources online. So if you have the desire to succeed, no matter what race or status you are, you will succeed because you have that drive. Now, making one group a victim based on their skin color and making another group the blame group is not how you empower people. Believe that they are successful already. They have what it takes, and they have the will and desire to make their dreams a reality. The way of thinking of a victim is damaging the children. They walk into schools thinking that they don't have what it takes and being told that they're oppressed. This is the mindset you want? Do you think they're somehow at a disadvantage and have been all this time based on the color of their skin? I see a major problem with that. One will never achieve success accepting a role as a victim and blaming another for their lack of achievement. Empowerment never casts blame or plays the victim. You and only you are responsible for your success and achievement. You cannot raise your value of self, empowerment, and success on one hand while demonizing and holding blame and accusing another or a school system as the reason you didn't succeed. This does not build character. Let's go back to the content of people's character and not the color of their skin. One must also consider the amount of mixed-race families and children in the district. What will a mixed-race child think about this, his or her parents, if they each have different ethnicities? If you haven't noticed, we live in the 21st century, and many families are now mixed and blended. How are...
Same.
Good morning to the school board of Palm Beach County. My name is Marisa Severin, and I am a mother of two children in a Palm Beach County school district. I am speaking on behalf of the equity topic on the agenda today and calling in opposition to the equity statements recently discussed to implement in Palm Beach County school district. As a former Californian, for the majority of my life, I have watched the destruction of the school district and state there into ruins by implementing these Marxist ideals. I do not believe that it is the school district's place to bring race and division into my home. It is my job to teach my children how to be a kind, loving, and accepting human being. You are creating division instead of healing it. By bringing these equity statements into the school district, you are opening the door and allowing super far leftist Marxist ideals into our county. In California, children are taught about sex, race, and hate in kindergarten. In kindergarten, they are sick. They just love each other at that point, and you are teaching them to hate. As a teacher in an after-school private sector, I watched my students become more and more brainwashed and hateful towards each other by learning all of these ideals. You are teaching them to hate instead of teaching them to love one another, help one another, and encourage one another to be their best selves. Encourage them to work hard to earn their achievements. Reward them based on their ethics and hard work. Teach them skills to be successful in the future. Don't let them play the victim card. That's a disservice to everybody. Teach them to be strong, to be confident, mentally and emotionally balanced individuals. Teach them to be team players while also learning healthy competitive individual skills. This is what our youth needs, not your political agenda.
Hi, my name is Ashley Labad. I work in the charter section of Palm Beach County, the one section that is disrespected probably most, maybe because charter schools tend to do better than public schools. Let's talk about ethics before equity. You are unethical. Preaching white privilege to teachers, staff, and students is not okay. You are telling these kids they can't achieve anything unless they are like, stop, just stop. How about promoting? You can do anything you set your mind to. If you truly, truly want to get it, life is what you make of it, and if you put in the hard work, you can get there. If my students knew what you were pushing, they'd be appalled. Why don't you spend the last few weeks in our classrooms, and I don't mean just five, 10, 30 minutes, spend the whole day and see that racism is being pushed by you, not them. Do the right thing and stop this equity nonsense. My students do not want to hear it anymore. I do not want to hear it anymore. I should not be scared to speak up as a teacher. Other teachers should not be scared to speak up. Please know that my students judge by character, and many of them are mixed, and to tell them that you have to be white to achieve something in life is telling them they don't have to fight for it. Please stop this now and get it together. Thank you so much for your time. Have a good day.
Hello, board members. My name is Victoria Dietz. I am a grandmother of students in Palm Beach County, and I am calling to give you some food for thought on this equity workshop that you're doing today. When I was a student back in the 1960s, our government worked very hard to remove segregation from our communities and make sure our students were all together in school together and sharing as peers and making friendships. My mother marched against the busing to keep us in our communities and keep us from being bussed into another one. It happened anyway. It was the beginning of a wonderful movement of our students becoming peers versus seeing each other in color. I am very confused by this new equity statement and what you're trying to do in the schools today, because to me, it appears that you're going backwards and that you're trying to segregate our students based on color once again. Why are you trying to take apart what has taken so many years to be improved? This is needless. We don't need to do it, and instead of just changing the words, you need to change the entire program. I hope you consider this seriously, and have a wonderful rest of your day. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. I am Pastor Ray Wiley and organizer with Faith in Florida. We are part of Faith in Action with more than 1,000-member institution representing 1 million families in 150 cities and 17 states. The mission of Faith in Florida is to build a powerful, multicultural, nonpartisan network of congregation and community organizations in Florida that will address systemic, racial, and economic issues that cause poverty for our families. We stand with Palm Beach County in solidarity with UNIFIA in our support for the school board of Palm Beach County equity statement as is. It is imperative that our county's public school system is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantage and transforming our systems by hearing and elevating unprecedented voices, sharing power, and recognizing and eliminating bias while distributing resources to provide equitable outcomes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julie Damsker. I know you guys don't weigh these call and comments very heavily. After last meeting, you made a decision without listening to all the phone calls, but because you set these meetings up at a very inconvenient time for working parents, I am unable to attend today. I just would like to state that I find your mission statement and your equity statement very damaging, very, I mean, I don't know how anyone could have cried or not after what it was previously. I really would like to learn more about what this curriculum is and what your own speech and meaning of children's voice. Also, I, it doesn't matter what topics you're talking about going forward. You have the parent's attention. If you decide you want to change food on the menu at school, we will be there, listening, commenting, dissecting you, because we have zero faith, zero trust that you actually care about our children. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Trinetta Rutherford with Faith in Florida. We are part of Faith in Action with more than 1,000-member institution representing 1 million families in 150 cities and 17 states. The mission of Faith of Florida is to build a powerful, multicultural, nonpartisan network of congregation, community organizations in Florida that will address systematic racial and economic issues that cause poverty for our families. We stand with Palm Beach County in solidarity to unify in our support of the school board of Palm Beach County equity statement as is. It is imperative that our county's public school system is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantage and transforming our system by hearing and elevating underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, and redistributing resources to provide equitable and... resources to provide equitable and equitable outcomes. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Conseja Thompson with Faith in Florida. We are part of Faith in Action with more than 1,000 member institutions representing 1 million families in 150 cities and 17 states. The mission of Faith in Florida is to build a powerful multicultural nonpartisan network of congregation or community organizations in Florida that will address systemic racial and economic issues that cause poverty for our families. We stand with Palm Beach County in solidarity with Unify in our support for the School Board of Palm Beach County Equity Statement as is. It is imperative that our county's public school system is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantage and transforming our system by hearing and evaluating underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, and redistributing resources to provide equitable outcomes. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Evangeline Ward with Faith in South Florida. We are part of Faith in Action with more than 1,000 members institutions representing 1 million families in 150 cities and 17 states. The mission of Faith in Florida is to build a powerful multicultural nonpartisan network of congregation community organizations in Florida that will address systemic racial and economic issues that cause poverty for all of our families. We stand with Palm Beach County in solidarity with Unify in our support for the School Board of Palm Beach County Equity Statement as is. It is imperative that our county's public school system is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantages and transforming our systems by hearing and elevating underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, and redistributing resources to provide equitable outcome for all. Thank you very much.
Rebecca Miller and I'm calling about the equity workshop. I would prefer for the teachers and the school system to get back to teaching math, English, and things that are needed, not a division between white and black. I'm having a real issue with this, that this has been taught at school. We need to get away from that. I'm seeing that y'all are putting a division between our children and each other. I've had children come home and crying to me that how horrible that we are, that because we're white people. I'm tired of it and this must stop. And it is not the teacher's place to bring this to the children and make children feel bad because they're white. This must stop. This is cruelty. This is, I can't even believe that I'm living in this present time that we would be doing Send them home, children crying. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Tiffany Young and I'm calling to speak on, and leave a recorded message on the equity program. I raised a Hispanic grandchild. I have three biracial grandchildren. This is teaching hate and division within families. This is causing so much damage and has absolutely no place in our school system. You are dividing families. You are causing conflicts between families. You are there to educate our children. You are there to teach them their basic needs and to educate them on math, reading, spelling, science, history, not things that belong in the household spoken about. This needs to end now. This, once again, has no business being in our schools. Thank you.
My name is Nicole Tarsia and I'm a concerned community member in Palm Beach County. I am aware of and continually learning about my advantages as a white woman. The School District of Palm Beach County's Equity Statement as is is a bold declaration and the language dismantling structures rooted in white advantage should remain in the statement. I do not believe that we can dismantle racism and systematic oppression if we do not also confront white advantage, which fosters and perpetuates these systems. If we take out the language regarding white advantage, we are not confronting ourselves, our history, missystems of oppressions inflicted on marginalized communities. I know many white people don't believe white advantage exists. They think, "I'm also struggling. I've had it difficultly. How can I have white advantage?" No one is trying to say that you're not struggling or to lessen the impact of your experiences, but you still have advantages, many of them unrecognizable to you, that enable you to navigate the world without fear and consciousness that the color of your skin impacts how others perceive and treat you. When I walk through the aisles in my local food store, I see bleaching creams marketed to lighten dark skin. Why do you think that is? Why are black people taught that they are not worthy as they are, that they should be something other? And why are all of us, regardless of skin color, taught that white is race? Families, communities, churches, businesses, financial institutions, government, healthcare, law enforcement, housing, prisons, and schools, societal systems all interclined, perpetuating racism and impacting generations. It is a continual cycle and we aren't willing to call it out. Our European ancestors came to this country with many good intentions, a chance to succeed and create new lives for themselves, but at what cost? The truth is that this country, in all its strength, was founded on genocide and slavery, even as our constitution espoused freedom for Eastern European white people. And even after slavery ended on the books, we continue to experience the ripple effects today. White people have the luxury of not noticing these ripple effects and that is white advantage, which is why the district's language should remain as is. Board members, please be brave and keep the language as is. And community members, please open your hearts to learning something new about yourself or shared history and what people other than you are experiencing.
Good morning. I'm Chabrow with Faith in Florida. We are part of Faith in Action with more than 1,000 member institutions representing 1 million families in 150 cities and 17 states. The mission of Faith in Florida is to build a powerful multicultural nonpartisan network of congregation community organizations in Florida that will address systemic racial and economic issues that cause poverty for our families. We stand with Palm Beach County in solidarity with unity in our support for the School Board of Palm Beach County Equity Statement as is. It is imperative that our county's public school system is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantage and transforming our system by hearing and elevating underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, and redistributing resources to provide equity outcomes. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Laura Dessey. I'm a mother of three in Jupiter and I'm calling regarding the equity workshop today or critical race theory that is being introduced to our schools. I'm shocked and appalled that anything is being taught in our schools except love and acceptance and that skin color is only a matter of difference of melanin. That is all. I cannot believe that the educators on the board actually think that this is okay to teach our children. Anything that invites divide and hate should not be part of the curriculum whatsoever. The only thing that should be taught, I repeat again, is love and acceptance of all people in one human race. I'm sitting here with my baby and I cannot believe that we are actually having this conversation. It makes me think that the people on the board are not fit to serve our children. I hope you make the right choice and change the curriculum to love and acceptance of all.
Good morning, School Board members. I am calling in regards to the equity statement. I'm Ms. Taylor. I am a white mom of a 14-year-old student of the School District of Palm Beach County. I'm calling in support of the equity statement as is. The problem is many white parents do not truly know what white advantage is. They don't understand the language or the terminology. It's the fact that I don't have to have the talk with my son about keeping his hands ten and two on the steering wheel if approached by a police officer in order to keep him safe and alive. I don't worry when I'm followed in a store, they're usually trying to up sale me. They don't think I'm trying to steal something. I'm not looked at every day and judged based on the color of my skin. I don't have to think about the color of my skin every day. I don't worry that my son will be bullied because of the color of his skin. My child can easily see himself in books because the pictures and stories are vastly based on white culture. I don't worry about being treated differently by the police, by doctors, or nurses because of the color of my skin. I don't have to talk to my son about how he will be treated based on the color of his skin. That is my advantage. I didn't ask for it, but it's mine because I'm a white woman. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cara Jennings. I'm the parent of two children in Palm Beach County. My son will be entering third grade at Highland Elementary School. I'm calling to make a comment regarding the equity statement that the School Board released. I fully support the equity statement. I think the term white advantage should remain in the statement. I think the statement very clearly addressed the issues that we face in this county. As a white person with two white children, who, my neighborhood school is a majority non-white school, I meet families all the time who are concerned about sending their child, their white child, to a school that does not have the advantage of having a majority white student, as there is a perceived and a real advantage to schools that benefit from having more white students due to the economics and the white privilege that come along with that. I think the School Board statement very clearly addressed this issue and the need to make changes so that this inequity does not continue. I hope the School Board members will stick to their guns, keep the statement as it is, and allow us to move forward as a county and a community to address the inequity that is prevalent in our school district. Thank you.
Good morning. Welcome Dr. Derek Dicklin, President of Palm Beach County Clergy Alliance. On the agenda items concerning the Palm Beach County Equity Statement, we, the clergy of Palm Beach County, stand in solidarity with Unify and Faith in Florida as well as Organize Against Racism in our support that the School Board of Palm Beach County Equity Statement remains as is. It is imperative that our county's public school system is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantage and transforming our system by hearing and elevating unprecedented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, and redistributing resources to provide equitable outcomes. We stand in solidarity because it's necessary for the well-being of all of our students. I want to say that as clergy, we understand that the well-being of our kids is paramount. So when we understand, when we eliminate bias and eliminate advantages that should not be there, it makes it an even playing field for all and we achieve the equity that we all so desire. Thank you so very much.
Good morning. I'm Juliette Knight with Faith in Florida. We are part of Faith in Action with more than 1,000 member institutions representing 1 million families in 150 cities and 17 states. The mission of Faith in Florida is to build a powerful multicultural nonpartisan network of congregation community organizations in Florida that will address systemic racial and economic issues that cause poverty for our families. We stand with Palm Beach County in solidarity with the Unify in our support for the School Board of Palm Beach County Equity Statement as is. It is imperative that our county's public school system is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantage and transforming our system by hearing and elevating underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, and redistributing resources to provide equitable outcomes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Todd Lavogue. I'm a 53-year-old white male and a teacher in Palm Beach County schools. I think the new equity statement that you have created is important and needs to stay as is. Keeping the phrase white advantage in the statement is important and I just wanted to let you know, as a, again, as a white male, I do think that this phrase is important to remain in the equity statement and it's important that we, we address this issue of systemic racism in our society. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Christie Ward with Faith in Florida. We are part of a Faith in Action with more than 1,000 member institutions representing 1 million families in 150 cities and 17 states. The mission of Faith in Florida is to build a powerful multicultural nonpartisan network of congregation community organizations in Florida that will address systemic racial and economic issues that cause poverty for our families. We stand with Palm Beach County in solidarity with Unify in our support for the School Board of Palm Beach County Equity Statement as is. It is imperative that our county's public school system is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantage and transforming our system by hearing and elevating underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, and redistributing resources to provide equitable outcomes. Thank you. Have a great day.
Good morning. I'm Angela Jackson with Faith in Florida. We are part of Faith in Action with more than 1,000 member institutions representing 1 million families in 150 cities and 17 states. The mission of Faith in Florida is to build a powerful multicultural nonpartisan network of congregation community organizations in Florida that will address systemic racial and economic issues that cause poverty for our families. We stand with Palm Beach County in solidarity with Unify in our support for the School Board of Palm Beach County Equity Statement as is. It is imperative that our county's public school system is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantage and transforming our system by hearing and elevating underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, and redistributing resources to provide equitable outcomes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Heidi Rubenowitz and I am a white resident of Palm Beach County. I am an educator and I am very concerned to hear that the Board is considering dropping the term white advantage from the equity statement. The equity statement was beautifully, thoughtfully crafted. It is a very important guide to future policies and behaviors within our schools and it absolutely should remain as written. I urge you not to give in to pressure from people who don't actually understand the purpose of this statement, who, and their fearful response is a clear indicator for the need for this statement itself. So please stand firm and do not revise this very well-written equity statement. Thank you so much.
Good morning. I'm Vivanne Peace with Faith in Florida. We are part of Faith in- We are part of Faith in Action with more than 1,000 member institutions representing 1 million families in 150 cities and 17 states. The mission of Faith in Florida is to build a powerful, multicultural, nonpartisan network of congregation, community organizations in Florida that will address systemic racial and economic issues that cause poverty for our families. We stand with Palm Beach County in solidarity with UNIFI and our support for the school board of Palm Beach County Equity Statement as is. It is imperative that our county's public school system is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantage and transforming our system by hearing and elevating underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, and redistributing resources to provide equitable outcomes. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Emily Baloff, and I'm a parent of twin second graders in this district, and I'm calling in support of leaving the verbiage in the equity statement as is. And I will read it now. The school district of Palm Beach County is committed to dismantling racism and other systems of oppression and inequity. Achieving racial equity requires proactive and continuous investment in historically marginalized groups who have endured centuries of systemic oppression. The school district of Palm Beach County is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantage and transforming our system by hearing and elevating underrepresented voices. I am a white Jewish American, and the enabling and elevation of the voices of racist bullies is clear, not only in our community, but within our nation, and that can be evidenced by what was the insurrection of our Capitol back in January. I find it absolutely intolerable that the voices of racist bullies were in fact elevated for seven hours straight at last week's board meeting. We have to continue to teach our children that the voice, that the words and the tone of our voices matter, and that they clearly do damage, evidenced in fact by the horror of many of the events, including the insurrection that occurred in the last 15 months. We have to continue to teach them that the First Amendment is the right for all of us. And last week, it was made clear by these verbally abusive bullies that not everyone's concerns were valid enough to be heard without booing in the background and bullying of the people who spoke those very words and concerns. Abusing the First Amendment right in the middle of a deadly pandemic with this anti-mask, anti-doctor crusade, and enabling these anti-maskers to believe that they have the right to scream, yell, pitch fits, and verbally attack public officials is a slap in the face to the founding fathers of our Constitution. Last week, Marjorie Taylor Greene compared mask and vaccine mandates to the treatment of Jews by Nazis during the Holocaust. And I am absolutely outraged because I heard the same anti-maskers also referenced Nazi Germany more than once during both school board meetings in the last two weeks. For these parents to compare public health measures intended to protect the public from the consequences of a deadly virus to any part of the horror that was the Holocaust is insulting to every single Jew who perished. And I am very concerned.
Hi, my name is Angela Sanchez Knutson. I would like an explanation as to what the definition of white advantage is. What do you consider white advantage? With that being said, all students should be given the same opportunities and be treated the same, no matter their ethnic background and/or skin color. That is to be applied to all students. No special treatment to a particular race or ethnicity, minority or not. This should be applied in the classroom and in all sporting activities. All students should be able to follow their ambitions, dreams, and move ahead based on their strengths. I'm extremely disappointed about the terminology used in the equity statement. With a panel of intelligent people, you decide to use race and divisive language to state all students should be treated equal. There was no need for any race stating. There is no place for racial discrimination in any manner in our education system and in society. By using racial terminology, you are creating more racism in our society. Please help us parents and the community understand what the changes are. What does this look like, and what is the plan? Please consider changing the equity statement to be more inclusive for all students. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Stacy Davis with Faith in Florida. We are part of the Faith Action with more than 1,000 member institutions representing 1 million families in 150 cities and 17 states. The mission of Faith in Florida is to build a powerful, multicultural, anti-partisan network of congregation, community organizations in Florida that will address systematic racial and economic issues that cause poverty for our families. We stand with Palm Beach County in solidarity with UNIFI and our support for the school board of Palm Beach County Equality Statement as is. It is imperative that our county's school board system is committed to dismantling structures rooted in which white advantage and transforming our system by hearing and elevating underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, and redistributing sources to provide equitable outcomes. Thank you very much.
Good morning. I am Tanya Lopez with Faith in Florida. We are part of Faith in Action with more than 1,000 member institution representing 1 million families in 150 cities and 17 states. The mission of Faith in Florida is to build a powerful, multicultural, nonpartisan network of congregation, community organizations in Florida that will address systematic racial and economic issues that cause poverty for our families. We stand with Palm Beach County in solidarity with UNIFI and our support for the Palm Beach County Equity Statement as is. It is imperative that our county's public school system is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantage and transforming our system by hearing and alleviating underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, and also redistributing resources to provide equitable outcomes. Thank you very much for your time, and have a good day.
Good morning. My name is Pastor Richard Daines, organizer with Faith in Florida. We're part of Faith in Action with more than 1,000 member institutions that represent 1 million families in over 150 cities and 17 states. We stand with Palm Beach County in solidarity with UNIFI and our support for the school board of Palm Beach County Equity Statement as is. It is imperative that our county's public school system is committed to dismantling structures that is rooted in white advantage and transforming our system by hearing and elevating underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, along with redistributing resources to provide equitable outcomes. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Cheryl Gruns with Faith in Florida. We are part of Faith in Action with more than 1,000 members representing 1 million families in 150 cities and 17 states. The mission of Faith in Florida is to build a powerful, multicultural, nonpartisan network of congregation, community organizations in Florida that will address systemic racial and economic issues that cause poverty for our families. We stand with Palm Beach County in solidarity with UNIFI and our support for the school board of Palm Beach County Equity Statement as is. It is imperative that our county's public school system is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantage and transforming our system by hearing and elevating underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating the bias, and redistributing resources to provide equitable outcomes. Thank you.
Hello, this is Nicholas Gubides. I live in West Palm Beach. Please keep the equity statement as it is written. If you fail to recognize that there is such thing as white privilege, then you will miss the mark on any equity statement. White privilege and white advantage are facts of this country. They are part of the foundation of this country. It was started to benefit white people. The laws were written to benefit white people. The police were formed to work for and benefit white people. The infrastructure was developed and built on the backs of labor, which was not from white people. If you are trying to make an equity statement, then you must accept this reality. Please do not allow anti-naysayers to convince you otherwise. They have opinions. We have facts. Please pass the equity statement as it is written, including this controversial "white advantage" and "white privilege." Hopefully, it will no longer be controversial to accept facts in the future if you pass this. Thank you.
I'm Janara Wright with Faith in Florida. We are part of Faith in Action with more than 1,000 member institutions representing 1 million families in 150 cities and 17 states. The mission of Faith in Florida is to build a powerful, multicultural, nonpartisan network of congregation, community organizations in Florida that will address systematic racial and economic issues that cause poverty for our families. We stand with Palm Beach County in solidarity with UNIFI and our support for the school board of Palm Beach County Equity Statement as is. It is imperative that our county's public school system is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantage and transforming our system by hearing and elevating underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, and redistributing resources to provide equitable outcomes. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Linda Collymore. The clergy of Palm Beach County stand in solidarity with UNIFI, as well as Faith in Florida, in our support for the school board of Palm Beach County Equity Statement as is. It is imperative that our county's public school system is committed to dismantling structures that are rooted in white advantage and transforming our system by hearing and elevating underrepresented minorities, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, and redistributing resources to provide equitable outcomes. Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Annie Isle. I'm a resident of The Glades, and I'm calling in support of the current school district of Palm Beach County Equity Statement. As a member of The Glades and organizing Against Racism of Palm Beach County Alliance, I am calling upon the school board of Palm Beach County to uphold the current mission and vision statement, which is a representation to the commitment of equity for student success. The school district of Palm Beach County states that its mission to educate, affirm, and inspire each student in an equity-embedded school system. What does it mean to have equity-embedded school system? It's a system that is unwilling to address the realities of what causes inequity. This entails educating every student about all facets of history and inequities, and how structural policies and laws have affected life outcomes for blacks, indigenous, and people of color. How can we purposely provide our students with a first-class education in preparation for the effective contribution to the global stage if we continue to enclose and defend hierarchy and oppressive systems that distort history? We must acknowledge that equity gap between student base on race, ethnicity, and income persists and thrives at the most institutions and specifically in education. And as a Glades resident, I have seen this firsthand. The very premise to which our educational system is built has created divisions and has vanished primarily along racial lines. Acknowledging and affirming the ripple effects of systemic inequity in education is one step towards realizing an equity-embedded system. As the school district newly adopted statements, envisions, equity-centered policies, and practices must be incorporated into the school district learning strategy, as well as initiatives and policies adopted that aid in the reduction of equity gap. We must talk about race. Race neutral efforts not only harm our black and brown children, but it harms every student because it creates ignorance towards others. So therefore, I'm asking that we keep the language as is, and I thank you for this opportunity.
Good morning. I'm Marie Roundtree with Faith in Florida. We are part of Faith in Action with more than 1,000 member institutions representing 1 million families in 150 cities and 17 states. The mission of Faith in Florida is to build a powerful, multicultural, nonpartisan network of congregation, community, and organizations in Florida that will address systematic racial and economic issues that cause poverty for our families. We stand with Palm Beach County in solidarity with UNIFI and our support for the school board of Palm Beach County. Statements as is. It is imperative that our county's public school system is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantage and transforming our system by hearing and elevating underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, and redistributing resources to provide adequate outcomes. Thank you.
My name is Pam White-Brode. I'm a resident of Jupiter, and I have two grandchildren in the public school system in Palm Beach County. I'm calling on the topic that the board is currently considering. I'm very upset that the board is considering removing the phrase "white advantage" from this carefully crafted equity statement. The board spent a considerable time workshopping this, and this phrase is important as it underlines the root causes of the lack of equity in our school system. For the board to cave into a radical group who opposes this phrase because of their racist beliefs aligns the board with racists. We have no place for this in Palm Beach County, and we certainly have no place for this in Palm Beach County schools. I've taken the time to teach my grandchildren and my children that racial equity is important in the school system and in our community, and it is incumbent upon the school board to keep the proper phrasing because white privilege is real. Thank you.
My name is Leontine Brown. I am a resident of West Palm Beach, a voter and supporter of many of the current and past board members of the school district of Palm Beach County. I am calling today to stand in opposition to the potential repeal of the recently approved school district of Palm Beach County Equity Statement. Now more than ever, it is critical to not only close achievement gaps that have long been burdensome to black and brown students, but to do so by acknowledging the ripple effects of historical inequities in education in this country. We must tell the truth about race in this country because only the truth will foster change. Race neutral efforts not only harm our black and brown students, it harms every student. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter, and I look forward to continuing to support you in these efforts in the very near future.
Hi, this is Laura Goodwin. I'm a student at West West River Town High School. I am making this call to encourage the school board, and more specifically Frank Barbieri, our district representative, to keep the equity statement as written. It is important to dismantle structures of white advantage in this country, including our education. our education system, so that all students receive the opportunities and access to succeed. This statement is to not offend white people, but to identify that all of our systems in this country were meant to advantage white and disadvantage people of color. There is much to do to repair the inequities that come for people- there is much to do to repair the inequities and outcomes for people of color. These efforts do not harm or take away from white people, but benefit us all collectively. I am hopeful that we can put these words to action to ensure equity for all.
My name is Lynn Jones. I am the parent of a student in Palm Beach County. I am calling in reference to the equity workshop tonight. I will not be able to be there, but I would like my comment put in front of the board. We will not have you stoking division with our schools, within our schools. My son said that prior to this, prior to 2019, they had no problems in the school. They did not look at race, they did not look at color, they looked at friends and values and respect, and that's who they chose as friends. I do not want those comments, those divisive comments kept in our mission, and again, I will not have you stoke division within our schools. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Crystal Rambarat, and I'm calling in support of keeping the equity statement as it is. I am the parent of two biracial children in Palm Beach County School District. I myself am a woman of color and immigrant, and I have lived experience of systemic oppression, and I strongly believe that our students deserve to be taught the truth, to be taught fairly and the most transparently possible, and I think it's the responsibility of our schools and school districts to ensure that our children are given an accurate account of history to inform their education and their lives going forward. Thank you for your support, and I appreciate the attempt you started with the equity statement and would like to keep it as it is. Thank you.
Hi, hopefully I'm getting this in under the wire. My name's David King. I'm calling because I understand white privilege. I am white, and I read the equity statement, and I think it's fine as is. I think calling to remove it is going backwards. We need to be inclusive and acknowledge reality. Please keep the statement as is. I think that's best for everyone, and it addresses reality and helps heal our nation. Thank you.
Hi, members of the board and Dr. Finoi. My name is Tyler Rios. I'm speaking on the equity workshop that's happening today, and I have to be honest with you, you have a lot of parents very nervous about this because of the critical race theory that's being thrown around in our nation right now. I wish we kind of knew what was going on with what you're thinking, and I do think it needs to be something that you include the parents on every step of the way. As of late, I've noticed that we as parents have been having to, been way more motivated to babysit the board because a lot of things are coming down the pipeline that are making us extremely nervous. Can I tell you a quick description of my children's day? When they come home, they usually tell me something that happened. I'll ask them, "Oh, who did that funny thing on the playground?" And they'll respond with something like, "Oh, the girl with the glasses," or "The funny one," or they'll say something like, "Oh, the boy with the curly hair." Never once have my children come home and said to me, "Oh, the Spanish one," or "The black one," or "The white one." And that is because I have worked my butt off as a parent to teach my children to judge a person according to the contents of their character and not the color of their skin. They just don't see it. They don't see the color of their friend's skin. They see their humor, they see their intelligence, they see their ingenuity. It's really actually beautiful because I, as a parent, as a child, I wasn't really, I didn't grow up that way. I had grandparents that didn't teach me that. So for me to have that attitude for my children, it literally makes me almost cry because it's so beautiful. But now we're starting to see that there's something coming down the pipeline where we're trying to reverse that. We're trying to tell children, "Oh, this is something you need to know about, that other people of other skin colors have this place in society, and you have this place in society," and we're actually putting the glasses back on their faces that we've worked so hard for them not to have. I would suggest, Dr. Finoi and members of the board, that you go sit in a classroom and you tell me, "Do you think these children need to be taught how to see their friends differently, how to judge their friends based on the color of their skin?" Because right now, they don't. They don't see it that way because we as the parents, we haven't taught them that way. So please do not reverse the hard work that we as the parents have put into our children to teach them that all of humankind is beautiful and wonderful, and they don't need to differentiate between their friend's skin color. Let me just check my notes. I've heard that you've, it's said that you've awoken the mama bear, and let me assure you that you have, and you've also awoken the papa bears in this county, and we are watching very, 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 very carefully about what you're doing right now. We will take action to make sure that you do not continue to harm our children with the policies that have been coming down and now with this racial rhetoric. Thank you so much for your-.
Yes, my name is Sona Shorndam, and I am a parent, and I am a woman of color, and I'm an educator, and I'm an advocate, and I urge you to accept the equity statement as written, as is, and I urge you not to edit the statement in the spirit of equity. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christine Janischewski. Like many parents, I'm not going to stand by while you try to push division and racism on our children. Your new so-called mission and push to teach racism is nothing but a movement to drive white people through the mud and bring back the race worth of the past. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. would speak out against your movement. He would remind you that he fought for equal rights and love and that you are taking a huge leap backwards. You are fueling hatred within people who have never had it before. Let me just point out some so-called white privilege that you speak of that my son, for example, encountered in your district. First of all, a few years back, he was being tested for giftedness. He misqualified by a point. Why? Because he did not earn extra points for being a minority. Oh, wait, that isn't white privilege, is it? That's minority privilege. But we do not fight against the perks and extras that are given to minorities. Equal opportunity these days could mean minorities have an advantage, as in minority quotas on jobs and college assistance. Skin color and ethnic backgrounds are constantly taken into consideration when planning classes in the district as well. You see, there is no white privilege going on in our schools or in society. Ben Carson is a highly intelligent man who did not come from an affluent background, and yet he was able to become an outstanding neurosurgeon and a cabinet member handpicked by a white president. Wow. Oh, wait, that isn't white privilege because Ben Carson is black. And I must note that I respect and look up to Ben Carson. He has more intelligence in his pinky finger than any of you or all of your brains combined. And I don't mean disrespect, I'm just pointing out that you have a very, very ignorant push with this racism. I could go on and on for hours about the successful black people who have had the help by the system to get where they are, and also those who did it on their own, and also about white people slighted because of the system or did it on their own, but I won't. It should be taught that hard work and determination gets you places. All have the opportunity to get where they want to be. No one should be handed anything or have anything taken away because of skin color or ethnic background. That is not equality. So you do not need to force division and hatred towards all white demographics. We as parents need to teach love, tolerance, and acceptance of all people. We need to teach our children to look at people as individuals and not judge them by their looks or by history. We should never generalize. You should not be involved in the teaching of values and morals to our children because you are one-sided and very, very wrong. Your CRT is a theory, a very racist theory, and we will not stand for it. You are a disgrace to the educational institution. Stick with teaching academics. You know nothing about love and peace.
Hello, my name is Marissa Stevens. I'm calling as a mother of a black son and a white daughter, and I'm calling because I oppose the new equity statement and whatever you guys are doing, we're trying to introduce the critical race theory. We came here to Florida from California where they were using the critical race theory to abuse our children. My daughter was told that slavery was her fault. She had to constantly apologize for being a white child, and my son was told that if he were to encounter a police officer, they would kill him on the spot. And first of all, none of this is true. If you look at the statistics, policing in America is not killing one race more than the other. One, white people are getting killed just as much. We have, his father, who is an officer, a black officer, agrees with me, and he's highly against this propaganda you guys are trying to push. So I don't know how you think that makes black children feel. He was also told that hard work and turning in work on time, being a good person are all attributes of whiteness, that he would never be able to be that because he doesn't have white advantage. And that's terrible. It's terrible to be pushing this on these children. And I personally feel like if Alexandria and Meghan Bell and all these other white liberals feel like they have white advantage, then why aren't they giving up their job? Why aren't they giving up their positions that they've gotten with this white advantage and letting, you know, other black or POC individuals to have those positions? Okay? Why aren't you giving all of your money to all the other black people that are not working? Okay? And furthermore, Meghan Bell is trying to get rid of a black member of this school board. So she's saying that she has all this white advantage, but then she wants Marsha to be fired. So personally, I feel like liberals are exactly the same as they've always been. These teacher activists, these school board activists, these union activists are basically just the KKK reincarnated. Okay? They want to make black people feel like they cannot ever succeed, they want to stay above them, they want to show all their white advantage, their white privilege. I mean, it's pretty much equivalent of the KKK. Okay? And I will not tolerate it. I will take my kids out. We've had it. Thank you.
Hello, this is Amanda Silvestri. I'm calling on the equity agenda. Good evening. I'm sorry to the parents that I could not be there in person. One to six does not work for many of us. The board knew that already, though. I would like to start by saying that as opposed to this equity statement as I am, I am also not ignorant to the fact that you, the board, have already began your indoctrination mission long ago. I will quote from a gifted endorsement course document, "White teachers and the white children they teach need to understand their position of privilege." How dare you call out a race like this? That is racist. There is a book students are reading called Ghost Boys. This is a story about a boy of color that was killed by a police officer. What are you attempting to teach these children? What is wrong with you? I would like to quote Mr. Barbieri from the equity meeting on 4/14 that nobody knew about. He says, quote, "We do not want to take this out to the community for them to start wordsmithing this. Like Ms. Robinson said, 'They will say, 'Now, you're taking opportunities away from my kids. Let's just not even give them the opportunity,' end quote." Wow. When is the last time this board looked at the organizational chart? At the top, it says, "Students, Parents, and Community." That means all students, parents, and the very community that you stated you did not want to give the opportunity to review and revise this. You as a board have lost your way. What happened to the mission statement of providing a world-class education to all of the children in your district? Equity is not equality. Equity is critical race theory. Equity is one of the many executive orders signed by Joe Biden. You cannot bring politics into the schools. You have been playing politics with our children for far too long, and we won't allow it to continue. Equity is a leftist attempt to indoctrinate the children in hopes that when they are older, they will have adopted leftist ideology. This is about control. It's sick, and you will divide these innocent children in the process. If you push this through, and I decide to keep my children in this school district, which is highly unlikely, I want you to know that our home base is so strong, and through communication and leading by example, my children will love everyone and base their decisions on character always. But it is so sad that you are willing to divide these children and create a hostile environment over politics. It's honestly sickening. If equity was equality, you wouldn't be calling out any race. But you are, and it's not, so here we all are in opposition of your radical intent at indoctrination. Thank you.
Hi, this is Shakira Norville. I'm a student at West Boca Raton High School. I am making this call to encourage the school board and more specifically Frank Barbieri, our district representative, to keep the equity statement as written. It is important to dismantle structures of white advantage in this country, including our education system, so that all students receive the opportunities and access to succeed. This statement is not to offend white people, but to identify that all our systems in this country were meant to advantage white and disadvantage people of color. There is much to do to repair the inequities and outcomes for people of color. These efforts do not harm or take away from white people, but benefit us all collectively. I am hoping that we can put these words to action to ensure equity for all. Thank you.
Hi, this is Kayden Hovis. I'm a student at West Boca Raton High School. I wanted to make this call to encourage the school board as well as our district representative to keep the equity statement as written. I understand that there's a bit of a uprising and trouble between some parents who had problems with the statement, white, dismantling structures of white advantage in our equity statement, but I think that this should be kept in our equity statement. This statement does not offend white people, but rather it identifies that our systems in this country have been meant to advantage whites. You look at history, and there is advantage towards white people. That's just what it is. And I think as the school board, you guys should be willing to keep this mainly because you have people of color who are in your district and who are still struggling to make sure that they make their way up to the top and be as successful as possible. There is so much to do to repair the inequities and outcomes for people of color, and these efforts do not harm or take away from white people, but benefit us all collectively. I think we can put all of these words in action to ensure equity for all, and on behalf of all students of color, I think that you guys definitely need to take this into deeper consideration because even though you have parents who are angry at this statement, it's for the wrong reason. And if people are taking it the wrong way, then I think that you guys need to verify what you guys meant by this statement. Rather than just saying, "Oh, parents are mad, let's change it," you guys really need to explain to them, and that's really it. Thank you. Bye.
Good afternoon, board members and Superintendent Finoi. This is Lieutenant Colonel Jason D. Bolt, United States Air Force, retired. Subject: Equity and Equity Agenda. I am severely disappointed that I cannot be there in person to rebuke you on your continued effort to inject racism into the Palm Beach County School District under the covert name Equity. Despite the explicit and direct declaration to stop by Governor DeSantis on May 20th, a day after we exposed your intentions to the Florida and to the rest of the nation, you remain subordinate, insubordinate to the governor's vision for a merit-based, constitution-driven public education. One private school parent in New York was so aghast at the equity agenda that he wrote a letter to push back to his private school. His words are very powerful and have influenced us all. We as parents have no longer any confidence that you will guide our children in quality education. You will not help them in healthy development or critical thinking or instill responsibility into becoming a civic-minded adult. You heard my speech loud and clear on May 19th as you tried to muzzle me. I exposed your socialist roots to the nation. We are mobilizing daily. We will defeat you in the Florida Legislature or on Election Day in 2022 and beyond. Collectively, you are all degenerate of the mind, impervious to reason, and hungry to be government-led power. We, the people, have drawn the red line, and you will not cross. We will not allow you to destroy the God-created minds of our children. We will not allow you to make them proles to bow to the knee of an Orwellian government. We will never stop our fight against your equity plan, and God is the ultimate judge. Make no mistake, the people of America, the people of Florida, and the people of Palm Beach County in our school district will win the day in the end.
Hi, my name is Kristen Cox, and I'm co-founder of Thrive Collective, a community asset development firm supporting wealth and power building in marginalized communities. I am also a parent of students in District 5 schools and reside in District 4. I'm appalled at our two representatives for folding under the pressure of a loud few. our two representatives for folding under the pressure of a loud few for the efforts that are necessary to repair and uplift so many. Dismantling structures of white advantage is dismantling systemic racism and will benefit all of us, including white people. What is very obvious in this display of white advantage is proof of how the education system has played a role in our lack of knowledge of race and racism in this country. Who built it? Why? And who it was to benefit? What is also clear by your reconsideration of the statement, the equity statement, is that we cannot depend on you or the education system alone to repair these inequities. The people must organize collectively to create interdependent support, severing our dependence on you to save us as, I'm sorry, severing our dependence on you to save us. While this message is to demand that you keep the equity statement you have constructed intact as is, the fact is that these are just words, not action, not a plan, just words. Schools populated by children of color in this district have been neglected and left behind. Our children are exposed to filth and mold, underqualified teachers, racist teachers. They lack access to resources for supplies and classes and programs that will help them grow and thrive. In the same school district that is building new schools in white neighborhoods and where students have access and choices, fix or more specialty academies. Maybe instead of writing equity statements, you all need to do an equity analysis, and you need to share that information with the students and parents in this district so that they can see what inequity looks like. Maybe then we can come together and do something about it.
Hi, this is Brina Gudigad. I'm a student at West Boca Raton High School. I am making this call to encourage the school board, and more specifically Frank Barbieri, our district representative, to keep the equity statement as written. It is important to dismantle structures of white advantage in this country, including our education system, so that all students receive the opportunities and access to succeed. This statement is not to offend white people, but to identify that all our systems in this country were meant to advantage whites and disadvantage people of color. There is much to do to repair the inequities and outcomes for people of color. These efforts do not harm or take away from white people, but benefit us all collectively. I am hopeful that we can put these words into action to ensure equity for all. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Ernestine Holiday. I'm a resident of Delray Beach, Florida. I have raised my children. They have grown up in Palm Beach County School System, my grandchildren, and now my great-grandchildren are in these schools. Please support the equity law as it is written. We would appreciate that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Willie Ferentz, and I am a resident of Delray Beach, District 7, with Deborah Robertson, and I'd like to share my views as relates to the meeting that's being held today, starting at 12:00. And I have full support, yeah, I'm calling with full support of the equity statement as it is currently written. I understand that there's some challenges and voices of different opinions. I want to have that removed. Being a descendant of slaves that have, who blood, sweat, and tears filled this country and have sacrificed a lot with their lives, I find it important that it remains the education that allows for individuals to be aware of our challenges, our struggles, and what white privilege has meant over the years. In order to prevent history from being repeated, it is necessary that history should be taught as it occurred. And so I wish that the equity statement that has been included in the documents for the county remain as is. And I look forward to your vote of support with all the voices that are calling in and looking to be present at the meeting as relates to the equity statement being currently, as is currently written, to stay that way without any abridgments or adjustments. Thank you. Again, Willie Ferentz, Delray Beach, 561-901-5145. Goodbye.
Hi there. My name is Andrea Traynor. I am the parent of two children in the Palm Beach County School District, either preschooler and a middle schooler. I would like to leave a comment today addressing the equity statement and the ruckus it has caused throughout certain communities. I do not agree that the statement should be changed due to the opinions of Mr. Barbieri called it the Eye of the Beholder. That is not how mission statements that were discussed, that were voted on, that facilitators and all sorts of people come together to craft. It is not then up to the Eye of the Beholder to take what they will from it. Mr. Barbieri made comments about the board having completed racial equity training and therefore, you know, putting them on this level of understanding that, in his opinion, the rest of the public was not up to. But once again, we have the worldwide internet at our fingertips. Any person that took issue with the word equity versus equality has the opportunity to then research for themselves the difference between those two terms. Mr. Barbieri mentioned that parents were calling board members Marxists and communists. So certainly if they're able to research what those terms mean, they can do the same and apply that level of research and knowledge to understand why the terms dismantling systems of white advantage, why using equity versus equality are so critical. And I applaud this school district for the great link that you went to, to craft and approve this statement. As it was mentioned, these were bold statements. I believe Mr. Barbieri called them incendiary statements. I do not believe that they are incendiary in intention. They were bold in intention. And I would really encourage the board to stick with that bold statement and really, you know, stand by your convictions. We've elected you to do just that, so please do not cave under the pressure of those that are not willing to do the work. Thank you.
Good morning, school board members. My name is Martha Carvalho. I'm here to comment on the BRD-1 equity statement. As a Hispanic woman who immigrated to this country, I was paraglastic when I received the district new mission, vision, and equity statement. All of these statements permeate with the latest Marxist words of equity bias, discommunization, dismantling, system of oppression, inequity, racial equity, historically marginalized, systematic oppression, white advantage, redistribution of resources. All of these words are rooted in critical race theory based on core Marx belief, and I strongly object to you teaching this to our children. I was blessed to come to this country as a young child from Nicaragua. This country provided me with an amazing opportunity to succeed. I was given an equal opportunity to succeed. I know the difference between equality and equity. Equity sounds nice, everybody having the same outcome. However, those are the words every communist totalitarian regime has used to gain power all over the world. These are the words the Sanes and the communist organizations in Nicaragua used to gain power. Now, everybody has equity and that we are all poor and oppressed and have had to flee our country. I oppose you teaching our kids and our teachers that our country has structures rooted in white advantage that must be dismantled. The United States is the greatest country in the world because it provides us all with so many freedoms and equal opportunities. If it were not so, why do you think we have millions of people from all over the world, put their lives on the line for a chance to live here? There's always room for improvement in everything, but the district needs to come on this from a place of gratefulness. Gratefulness for what we have and a desire to make it better, not from a place of hate with a desire to dismantle. If the district continues on this path, my family will be forced to remove our four children from the school board of Palm Beach County. I truly believe your common sense desire to do what is best for our students. I also believe that most, if not all of you, were born in this country, have not had the opportunity to live abroad. Therefore, you are not truly able to understand how wonderful this country is and how much of equal footing it's provided to all of us. Thank you for your time. Bye-bye.
My name is Cheyenne Bell, and I will be addressing the change of the equity statement. You cannot change the word white privilege, advantage. Change will never happen if phrases are sugarcoated. Changing the phrase means that you are putting the feelings of fragile people above the need for change. You are putting the feelings of fragile people above the need for truly supporting and acknowledging students and parents of color. If we are talking about changing a system that caters to a certain group of people, we have to acknowledge who benefits from it and who is hurt from it. We cannot expect change with such vagueness if the phrase is removed. We see the statistics and we see the disparities in person. We know about the system of oppression that has yet to be dismantled. Any parent or student who is so worried and upset about this phrase would take the time to do their own research and teach their kids. We cannot be afraid to call out systems that perpetuate oppression by its name. We have been fighting for equality for centuries. We have already been moving too slow. Let's not move backwards. My thesis and nephew deserve an education in which the truth is acknowledged. They deserve a school board and officials who understand and explicitly state what they are trying to fix and who they are trying to help. We have not been fighting for equality for this long just for the school board to change the phrase and pretend that, like, they do who not see us or what is hurting us. Acknowledging this does not cause division. It only showcases the already existing divisions. How can we fix something if we are deliberately hiding it? There is unity and truth. This is an education system in which we understand that there is fact and there is opinion. White advantage is a fact proven by math and social sciences. If you are upset about it, you are afraid of losing your own advantage. You are only showcasing your fragility, and that is the very reason this phrase has to stay.
Hello, my name is Lidia Navarrete Perez. I am calling about the Critical Race Theory, and I want to ask you, please stop it. This is not healthy for our students. I used to be a teacher, and I know how the children will be impacted against this theory. Please stop it and do not try to harm the children. There are thousands of parents and grandparents against this theory, and please stop it. Don't let it pass. My name is Lidia Zela Navarrete Perez.
Hi, my name is Dina Martinez. I am not, I am not approve the Critical Race Theory to be part of our mission, vision, equality statement. Please stop that. Please stop that. Mi nombre es Dina Martinez y no apruebo la Critical Race Theory. Que sea parte de la misión y visión y equality del estemma del escurgo de West Palm Beach. Por favor, por favor, paren eso. Please stop that. I am not approve the Critical Race Theory to be part of our mission, vision, equality statement. Stop it, please. Mi nombre es Dina Martinez y mi número de teléfono 56131941. Espero que el número no lo hagan público después. Adios. Gracias.
Hi, this is Chica Alonzo. I'm a student at West Boca Raton High School, and I'm making this call to encourage the school board, and more specifically Frank Barbieri, our district representative, to keep the equity statement as written. It is important to dismantle structures of white advantage in this country, including our education system, so that all students receive the opportunities and access to succeed. So like, this statement is not to offend white people at all, like, to identify that our systems in this country were meant to advantage whites and disadvantage people of color. There is much to do to repair the inequities and outcomes for people of color, so these efforts not, so that these efforts not harm or take away from white people, but benefit us all collectively. I'm hopeful that we can put these words into action to ensure equity for all. Thank you.
Good afternoon, superintendent and board members. My name is Minister Greta Britt, and I am the founder of United Believers of Delray Beach, as well as a parent. I am, I am speaking to you today to let you know that we support the school board's equity statement as is, and we are asking you to do the same. I also left each of your voicemails messaged. United Believers is composed of clergy and faithful leaders within Delray Beach. Our mission is to work together in unity to address the needs of our community and stand against unrighteousness and injustices. We stand in solidarity with Unify and Faith in Florida in support of the school board of Palm Beach County Equity Statement as Is. It is imperative that our county's public school system is committed to dismantling structures rooted in white advantage and transforming our system by hearing and elevating underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating biases, and redistributing resources to provide equitable outcomes. Remember, Dr. King said, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." Where will you stand? Dr. King also said, "The time is always right to do what is right." We are asking you to do the right thing and leave your equity statement as is. Thank you.
Good morning, members. My name is Juan Carlos Carvalho, and I'd like to give you my thoughts on the BRD-1 equity statement. I am a Hispanic male. I did immigrate to this country, and I am appalled by the district's new vision, vision and equity statement. If you wish to destroy the future of our kids and the future of this beautiful country, you're on the right track. I fled a communist regime, and I cannot believe that the U.S. is now heading in that way. I am a minority, and yes, my skin is dark, but I have worked hard and I have succeeded. This is also true for my friends and my family. Hard work pays off, and I'm living proof of it. I teach my children God's values and morals, the importance of hard work, the importance of learning. It is our responsibility as adults to teach them and prepare our children for adulthood. If you continue with this harmful vision, I will be forced to remove my children from your schools. Many people are upset with you and do not agree with you, but people tend to stay quiet. But I'm here to tell you that you're in the wrong. This way of thinking is not right. Thank you very much for your time. Take care.
Good afternoon. My name is Cassandra McCret, and I am a former teacher for Palm Beach County Middle Schools and Elementary Schools. I served as a science coach and a middle school STEM teacher in a charter school and English language arts with my just, my previous position in the north area. I wanted to call and first speak about the course failure, or first and foremost, talk about what equity means to me, and that means that everyone should be treated fairly. That means staff, students, and any employee on the campus. That means staff, students, and any employee on the campus. But most, mostly, we want to make sure that the course failures are accurate. And from what I gathered just previously working, I noticed that students were not being graded or assessed in the appropriate way. Reading Plus and the FSQs and USAs seem to be setting them up for failure. I think there needs to be more informal assessments, and that could eliminate the students from going to middle school course recovery. Or if in fact it's necessary, then they should go to course recovery and shouldn't be pushed through the system if they do not have paperwork or IEPs. We need to increase the parent communication for testing schedules for the FSQs and USAs. I know that I am a parent of a first grader and a third grader, and I do not have any knowledge of when those tests are happening in the classroom. I wanted to also make sure that I touch on increasing paper trails, for example, CBIRs. The corrective behavior interventions need to happen in order to eliminate the out-of-school suspensions. Those paper trails need to be documented. Students serving detentions. These things need to happen first before the referral. Parent conferences. In my last school, I wasn't able to hold parent conferences without my team. In order to schedule a parent conference as a teacher, I should be able to do that on my own and not have, I shouldn't have to schedule a meeting with a parent with an entire team. You can't coordinate schedules with all those people. Please take this into consideration.
My name is Paula Shaw, and I'm leaving a message for the special meeting regarding the new equity statement. I'm a parent of two children in the Palm Beach County schools, and I agree that it's of utmost importance to ensure there's equity in our schools and community. No one person is better than another, and no one person should be given an advantage. However, by using a blanket statement that identifies one group as having an advantage over another because of how they look is the very definition of prejudice and leads to racism. I want to know what structures are currently in place that are oppressing another racial group, what resources will be redistributed. Parents and taxpayers need to be involved in the planning process and informed of changes the board plans to make. It's unacceptable that rather than using this as an opportunity to create a statement of unity and leading by example, the board singled out a group of people based on the color of their skin. This type of language is racist, and it's a form of bullying which has no place in our schools. I appreciate this opportunity to speak, and I hope that we can all be included in this process. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Erin Maggio. I live in District One in Palm Beach County, and I'm the parent of two children, one a middle schooler and one an elementary school student. My middle schooler is an excellent student, not because it comes naturally, but due to her hard work and drive to do her best. I believe any policy that tells her different, or any child different, is wrong, and I won't stand for our schools to tell her or any child otherwise. I believe the public school system should teach core academics, reading, writing, arithmetic, and factual history, as my children have active parents, to teach them their core personal beliefs, character, and morals. I want to say shame on the leaders of the school system as they think they can force their ideology and political beliefs on the children of this county. And shame on us parents who weren't paying attention to the school board, who thinks they can push these items through. And by changing their wording and not their thought process, we are now watching you closely and in the future. Thank you.
This is Christine Campenolo Jones. I am an immigrant. I am a child of an immigrant. I am an Ivy League-educated doctor, entrepreneur, and I am a mother of three children in Palm Beach County. I am also an accreditation expert, and I consult for companies in South Florida. And I understand the need and requirement to update your mission statement. The mission statement unanimously approved by the school board is the reason for my call today. If I was your accreditation auditor, I would have a significant problem with a mission statement that does not address the root cause of your problem. Here is what I have gathered from the data that was provided to WPTV, which is a news outlet in Palm Beach. In elementary and in middle school, the discipline issues have been trending downwards for the last four years. Provided that there are no changes to how discipline issues are being identified in the school, this is a win for the district. The most significant reduction in discipline problems is in the cohort of black males. It has trended down 2.1% in four years. This demonstrates that if all else remains unchanged, your policies to dissuade discipline issues are working. After looking at your data for high school students, suspension data has no trend except for in one cohort. The most significant trend that I saw, which was not highlighted in your analysis, is for high school females in the cohort of free and reduced lunches, another gain for the district. Your data on who failed classes in ninth grade based on race and category is not an accurate representation of student performance, as it is not trended data and it occurred during a pandemic. Most of these kids were at home. These children failing these courses has nothing to do with white advantage. It has to do with the district's mismanagement and the lack of an emergency plan, which is likely an accreditation deficiency or a nonconformance. Other than the data provided by the news outlet, I have not seen any additional data. But what I can tell you is that white people as a race have no impact on how the school district interacts with black, ESE, free, and reduced lunch children. White people do not impede their communication with these cohorts. In fact, in your data, in many instances, Hispanics and whites had similar metrics, but the school board chose, but the school board chose to isolate white people. I would highly suggest that the school board go back-
Hi, my name is Casey Barnes. I'm calling on the Equity Workshop. I was calling with concerns about what you guys are trying to teach your children, especially their young children in school. You know, I am white, and I'm very proud of it, as everyone should be proud of their race. I believe that you guys are mentally hurting our children and just flat-out teaching our children racism at a young age. You know, children, they don't see color. They only see, you know, how well they play together, how they treat one another, you know, you know, good behavior from bad behavior. You know, by teaching them this, you're teaching them to see color, teaching them to be ashamed for being a different color than, let's say, the kid sitting next to them. By creating this program, you are creating a problem, you know? It's harmful to our children in so many ways. Brainwashing them with this false information, you know? These kids are the future of our country, and you are setting them up for failure, teaching them division, segregation, to be shameful of their race, of their color. You know, these teachers' unions, the institutions, you guys are making a clear that you are not here for our kids, you are here for yourselves, and you're holding our children hostage by these ideas that are not based on reality. If you keep pushing this garbage, you are only going to further wake up more parents who are going to pull their students from public schools or whatever schools that are going to go along with this. I really do not believe in it. You really have to hold yourselves accountable for what you are doing to our children, whether you're masking them or whether you're teaching them, "This is not okay. And you need to listen to us." If it's not right, I don't agree with it, and I really hope that you guys hear us, because we will not stop, and you should be ashamed of yourself. Thank you.
This is Reginald Cox, calling for the item on the agenda for regarding the Palm Beach School District Equity Statement, current equity statement. I am calling in support of leaving the statement as is. Chair of the North Side, the Set Neighborhood Alliance in Delray Beach, represent a thousand acres, and twenty-five neighborhood associations, and we are calling for the school district to leave the equity statement as is for a tremendous amount of number of reasons throughout the history of this country, the history of this county. It is imperative that the school district stay on the side of social justice, license and equity for all in this capacity. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nina Lover. I'm here to comment on BRD-1 equity statement. I categorically oppose the school district of Palm Beach County bringing the plural Marxist critical race theory ideology into our school system. In addition, Governor DeSantis' latest CRT will not be taught in our schools, and the district's latest mission, vision, and equity statements are passive CRT. I am in this country because I had to flee my communist country. I know what all of these Marxist words and beliefs lead to. They lead to impoverishment and oppression, etabli across the board. The United States is a great country. This is the reason why millions of people from all over the world want to make this country their home. In everything and everywhere, there is room for improvement, but not for hate. I cannot say idly buy and let a new generation of students be taught that this country is built on structures rooted in white advantage that must be dismantled, that it has historically marginalized people, that it has systems of oppression. This country is built on a belief that all men are created equal, and as such, we have become a beacon of light for so many immigrants like myself. I just wish you, as native New York citizens, to realize how great this country truly is. Please do not destroy this country. If you continue to go down this path, I will have to remove my three children from the school district of Palm Beach County. The new mission, vision, and equity statements bring forth nothing but racial division amongst the public and the evil children, and now bring them amongst our students. Please let us come together. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Shayna Latulip. I have three children in the Palm Beach County District, and I am speaking on the agenda item, the equity statement. I have found it very divisive after reading this equity statement. Instead of bringing unity to our county, it seems that you have brought division and racist viewpoints. If we, if we read the definition of racism, it's a belief that a race is a fundamental detriment of human traits and capacities, and that racial differences produce an inherent superiority of a particular race. So how does dismantling structures rooted in white advantage not apply to the definition of racism when it is a particular race? Now, I also have concern about the fact that the school district wants to take ownership for the students' academic mastery. Only a student can take ownership of their mastery, along with the support from the family unit, the parents, siblings, from the, the teachers around them. But I want to know, what is the ownership interest in our children for our school board? Last I checked, our children are, the parents are the owners of the children, not the school board, not the school district. I think that they want to develop, when you say you want to develop agency and voice, yet you're eliminating a whole race to be able to represent their voice. I think that this entire statement needs to be eliminated, and we need to bring some unifying language for our students and for our children. Thank you.
Yes, at this time, I'll have our chief of staff, Mr. Ed Tierney, and Kathy Villa Vicencio come forward and lead the board in a review of the equity statement and other pieces, and I will participate with the board as they progress. Mr. Tierney?
Chairman Bormeiri, Vice Chairman Woman, Mrs. Brill, School Board Members, Dr. Fanoya. I'm pleased to be here this evening to help facilitate Equity Workshop Number Four, the purpose of which is to give the board an opportunity to discuss the equity statement and then discuss potential next steps. I'm joined this evening with Ms. Kathy Villa Vicencio. You'll see the agenda for this evening, and our portion will go quickly. The first bullet, why equity? And I'll remind the board that this entire process started with data analysis. And that analysis, during that analysis, the board surfaced and was evident that there are gaps in performance among our students. And the board signaled, and the superintendent signaled, that the next strategic plan should address those gaps and improve outcomes for all students. And that was the origin of this entire process. We're going to cover the timeline briefly in a slide you've seen many times before, and then we're going to make sure to try to keep students-centered when we talk about the pre-work phase that's in the process of winding down, the strategic planning phase, and the creation of the goals that will serve as the backbone of that plan, and ultimately the execution of that strategic plan, which will be designed to improve outcomes for all students. Slide is a recap of how this work started. We started with the pre-work phase, which was mission, vision, and equity. That's a critically important portion of that phase, but I'll remind the board that that, that pre-work portion is designed to influence or impact organizational outcomes that should, or actions that should improve outcomes for our students. So that pre-work phase, including the data analysis, will then lead to the planning phase and ultimately the actions taken for, that we'll take as a result of the strategic plan we're in the process of creating. And this is the timeline. You've seen it many times. We won't spend much time on it, but I'll just call your attention to how much work has been done, beginning with the data analysis and the root cause, culminating in the board being presented with the strategic plan in late July.
Hello, board. So today, we're also just taking an opportunity to recap this work, because we also know that, as Mr. Tierney said, a lot has happened, and so trying to revisit that foundation, I think for members of the public as well, to address some of their concerns and questions that I know y'all have received, as well as we've received into board office. So this is an opportunity to do that. So back in November, you saw that puzzle piece, really using this as a time to set a strong foundation for the next strategic plan. I know there have been questions about instruction in actual classrooms, but it's important to remember, really, this work is informing the strategic plan. And so, you know, we started with that root cause analysis, as Mr. Tierney said, always grounded in the data. That led to, you know, what does equity mean in our educational system? Again, really focused on the data, not really politicizing this, but using that as the motivation for focusing and trying to understand, why aren't we seeing the same outcomes for every student? And then that led to mission and vision revisions that were ultimately adopted by the school board on May 5th. And so you'll see there at the bottom, we kind of have this, this bike analogy that we went over way back when with Mary Furtakis on equality versus equity, right? So not the same bike for everyone, but the bike that they need. And so you also have a copy of that, just as a reminder, since, again, we know folks have talked about defining things, what does this mean, what does that mean? So that's just a nod to making sure we, we remember kind of how we, how we got to this point. So everything that we do is about students, right? That's the mandate that we have from the governor, from the Department of- That's the mandate that we have from the governor, from the Department of Education. The students have to be at the center of everything that we do. You know, the school board's purpose is, is making sure that every student has what they need to be proficient, reach certain outcomes. Um, and, you know, that is also just what the, what the purpose of the district is as well. So wanting to make sure that we are just grounded in centering our students and remembering our why. And so, we talked a little bit about the data. Mr. Tierney and I will just very briefly go into certain data points. Um, this is not all the data that y'all looked at for the root cause analysis. You know, on March 3rd, our Deputy Superintendent, our CIO, and our Chief of Performance Accountability held a workshop on our current strategic plan, where we are, where we need to go, why we might not have met, you know, all of our long-term outcomes at the end of, of this year. And so, um, I also want to point out, I know there were some comments about, um, the data and not everyone succeeding, right? But this is an A-rated district, right? Uh, this is also a designated high-performing district by the Department of Education by their standards. So, um, when we disaggregate the data, that's kind of where we see the inequities, right? So I just want to acknowledge that despite some of those disparities we see once we disaggregate that data, this is an, an A-rated district by the Department of Education by their standards. So that's important to recognize as well, that's important context, because I know it's easy just to kind of focus on the negative. So, um, but with that said, you know, student data is supposed to be used as a flashlight to help us get better, to help us improve. And so, um, the first data point that you see is around, um, students in elementary school who have one or more out-of-school suspensions, right? So, um, we're, again, this is just us looking at our data and trying to understand, you know, what is happening, right? Do we see any patterns or trends that we may want to dig into more, right? So, um, we do see some. We do see some patterns there, um, in, in our elementary school students and their out-of-school suspensions. Um, you know, some people had different analogies about, you know, a pool, and the pool is so small, and, you know, if you take some kids out of the pool, then you put others in, then not everyone's in the pool. And I think what the board has talked about is making the pool big enough for every student, not necessarily taking away from some to give to others. So again, just using that data to frame that. If we look at high, at middle school, we see a similar pattern in terms of, you know, where the highest rates are. I think this is also a great, um, data point to illustrate that we have a lot of work to do in middle school in general, right? For all students. And so as we, um, look at our strategic plan, as Mr. Tierney said, these are opportunities where we can kind of address these inequities that we see in the data, uh, not just for particular subgroups, but also, you know, certain grade levels where we know, hey, there's something going on here when we disaggregate this data. And then, once again, when we look at it in high school, you know, we still see this pattern. What's going on here, right? Why is this happening? Why do we see that in the data? So again, just wanting to make sure we're grounding this in the student data and revisiting really what motivated the school board to go down this path of equity.
This is ninth grade course failures. This is one of the data points that we started on the data, data analysis looking, when we started looking at it. My opinion is, you know, for a principal or someone who supervises schools, this is the most important data point to track, because these course failures have a tremendous impact, tremendously negative impact on the trajectory of an individual student, and it really detracts from the culture of the school that those students attend. So this is an example of data point and equitable data points that we may or should probably look at to determine the cause and then plan to address through culture, systems and instruction in order to minimize this impact.
And then, I know Mr. Tierney and I were looking at some of these slides. There's a lot on there, and so I know someone referenced the downward trends, right? So we know that that's happening. We know that work is being done. But I think this slide in particular, if we focus on, uh, you know, 2020, which was COVID, we saw a huge spike, right, in course failures for a lot of different reasons. It just kind of drilled home that those, you know, disparities, those inequities are even bigger because of COVID. But again, we can kind of see there's a pattern here. What's going on? Why is this happening, right? How can we address that as a school system where our mandate is to make sure that every student is succeeding and we're not seeing course failures in the ninth grade at this rate? Um, and then in elementary school, um, you know, our accelerated ma- accelerated math program, we know has really great outcomes, really sets students up so that they can take, you know, Algebra I at a certain grade level, which we know is an indicator of whether they're college-ready, right? So we know that, um, those accelerated math programs are a huge benefit to our district. But here, we can see who's enrolled at higher rates, right? And so again, I want to stress, this isn't about taking some kids out to put other kids in. It's about how do we make the pool bigger, right? So that everyone is benefiting from this, so that every kid gets what they need, every kid gets the right bike. So again, this is about the kids and making sure that we're setting them up for success. So again, higher peaks here means that they're enrolled at higher levels. Doesn't tell us why, right? It just tells us there's a difference here. Why is that? What's going on?
Next two slides, we're going to look at it a slightly different light, and then in that, these trends are generally positive. So before I, I go too far into it, we're not satisfied, the, the work is not done, but we've generally sees a positive trend. This slide is middle school student enrollment and advanced coursework. And we've, we've talked many times, Mr. Oswald, Dr. Sheffield, about master board analysis and the organizational focus we've had on analyzing our master board, providing more access to courses, providing more support. And as we see these numbers trend up, again, that work is not done, but as we see them trend up, this, this to me indicates to us that when we pick an important organizational data, data point, and we focus on it, and we hold ourselves accountable, that we are capable of moving in a positive direction and improving outcomes for students. So that just highlights to me the importance of the data analysis, finding the areas of growth, creating a strategic plan to address the important levers that improve student lives, and then holding ourselves accountable for doing that.
Yep, and pointing out, everyone is increasing, right? You don't see one increase and then another decrease. So again, making the pool bigger.
This next slide is the high school version of the previous slide. And at this point, Mr. Board Chair, it's time for board discussion.
Board members? Ms. Ayala?
First, I want to say thanks to staff for recapping the long road that's brought us here. It's been a lot of work on everyone's behalf, and I'm proud of it, and for reminding us that none of this was done on a whim or with any other intent, other than to get our district to a point where every single child can achieve better academic outcomes, like we want to see those numbers continue going up on those slides. So that shows that this statement has always been and is data-driven. It is not politically driven. And it was created to make sure that our system is better for the nearly 200,000 students that we serve. But before we get into addressing the equity statement directly, I just want to make it very clear, from my perspective, just how inappropriate, disrespectful and insensitive I thought that any Holocaust comparisons we heard today were. Um, they should have no place in this chamber. Careless Holocaust analogies that conflate issues and attempt to demonize and intimidate targets, which are us, are actually just detractors from the real issues that are challenging our society and create a space where we can't even talk about them collaboratively in a thoughtful discourse. So I just really needed to say that, because I don't think any of us up here have been called racist, Marxist, communist, socialist so much in one day. And none of us are any of those things. That's probably the primist example of why we need this equity statement and this work done in this district in the first place, because we need to educate everybody on what equity means. So that's the true irony here. I hope that today, we can focus on what we need to do, which is looking at how we can provide a clear plan on this statement for its execution, how we turn words into actions that filter throughout our district for successful outcomes that come out of these words, and how we can be clear and specific and intentional with our vision and avoid these disrespectful displays of people who clearly miss the point. That's what I hope that we can accomplish here today. Thank you.
Mrs. Whitfield and Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. First, I want to thank everyone who came to speak to us today. Your voices are important to me. The reason I do this job is because I believe in Palm Beach County. I believe we have more in common than those things that divide us. My goals in this job have always been to elevate this community, to make sure that each person has a voice. I've said many times that I want to make our schools welcoming and supportive of all our children. I've been listening to your comments. I've heard many themes running through these comments. Everyone that came here today spoke and said on some level that they wanted an equitable education. They wanted to make sure that their children were loved, respected, and taken care of in our schools. No one wants to punish or demean one group of kids. I don't want to make anyone feel that we aren't respecting their children or them. That was never my intention. One woman said that we should be teaching reading, writing and arithmetic. I want to assure you that this equity statement was made so that we can do this. When you look at our data, there's a huge difference beyond, between how the work we do serves black boys, which is our lowest achieving group, not including ESE, and white girls, our highest achieving group. Someone asked, why would we do this during the time of a pandemic when there's so much going on? This is exactly why we're doing this work now. It is because our children are suffering at levels they never have before. The number of children across the board who have Fs on their report card have more than doubled throughout this district in this year. We're not trying to indoctrinate your children or promote one political ideology over another. I believe political discourse among diverging views is how we get to the best decisions as leaders. This work is just us trying to be honest about the deficiencies in our system. Doing this work is the most important thing we can do at this time. When this system works for every kid, all kids will do better. Your children will be more successful. Our goals are to be the best school system in the country. Nothing less will do, because your children go here and so do mine. I'd like to keep the equity statement the way it stands. I believe in the work that we did. If this board collectively decides that the words that we used are too harsh or they would like to change the wording, I'll support that decision, because what's important to me is that we are supporting every child. The intention that we had behind this statement is what must stay, that all children are educated, affirmed and inspired to be their best selves. I want to support, uplift our children, and I want to make sure that every person who comes to this school district has their best opportunity to succeed. And that's it. Thanks.
Mrs. Andrews?
And thank you, and I want to thank everyone who came today and spoke to me as a school board member and the rest of the team here on the school board. Your voices are being heard. We are listening to you. It's truly important that we hear all sides. And today, I heard a lot. And, you know, we, uh, started this equity journey with a consultant. So I want to thank you, uh, Mr. Tierney and Ms. Villas-Luena, for your work that you've been doing. But I go back to, uh, we hired a consultant to, to help us. Now, today, it would have been a good time to have that consultant here when we had so many people talking about, what did you mean? When we were in those closed-door meetings and we were talking, and she gave us direction based on her experience, because I think the school district hired her. I, I never saw the contract, but the school district hired her to come in here and help us. Today would have been a good day to have her here to answer some of the questions. And so as we move forward for the next steps, do we still have this consultant, uh, Mrs. Furtakis, working with us? Have we hired more consultants? I, I really do believe the statements that we're talking about here today are words, and I, and the words, uh, caused a lot of polarization. They have caused a lot of, um, confusion for people, and, and people felt that their children, uh, were being discriminated because we were talking white advantage and, and this piece that we, we worked on today. And so that's why it would have been really wonderful to have a, a recap if our consultant had been here. So I just want to go back. Are we still working with this consultant? Do we have more consultants working with us? Or will it be the school board taking it to the next level, when you say the next steps?
We, we worked with Ms. Furtakis on the first contract to work through equity statement with the board. The board recently approved her second contract, and the scope of that contract was more to work within, with capacity for staff. So we are, still have Ms. Furtakis on contract. Her focus has shifted from board as the pre-work wound down to staff capacity.
May, uh, may I request that each board member get a copy of that contract? I think it's important for us, because as we listen to the public today, there were really concerns about how we came up with what we came up, and we certainly didn't have any intent to cause harm, uh, to, uh, be, uh, causing decisiveness and to cause confusion and misunderstanding, and for people to say that, you know, this was part of what we do. I've been on the school board a long time, and I truly work for academic excellence for all children, and I know the actions mean more to me than the words. And when we have seven words here that we're, we're, we're really concerned about, uh, on both sides, uh, one side saying, we can't lose these words, and the other side is saying that it's going to cause harm to their children, it makes me say that we've got to come together. We've got to come together and figure out how to do this. This is why I was asking, where was the consultant today? And so when I, when I, when I look at this, I felt like, uh, we've, uh, we haven't been inclusive with these words, so that everybody could feel that there was something in it for everybody. When we're talking about equity, we're talking about each and every student. And so that's why I was looking for the consultant today. And I do believe that we must improve the performance of, uh, our underperforming children. That's something that I believe in very, very much. And so when I say we're moving forward, I just really want to make sure that we're getting that help that we need, and is it just going to be your office doing it? I know we have now, uh, formed a new office for strategic planning. So I just want to know, do we have a second consultant working with us?
The other part is Insight, which is working on the strategic planning process. And we've talked about them a little bit. They're nationally renowned for building equitable strategic plans throughout the country. So that, that's the other function that consultants are, are performing for us right now.
And just for the board's, um, edification, the, um, the consultant's contract is attached to the item.
Yeah, and I will just add, this fourth equity workshop was on the calendar since the beginning, and we had always flagged that this would be the inflection point, where Mary is still informing the, the slides for today. We've had prep meetings with her. I understand that she's, um, had some one-on-one phone conversations with board members who also want to reach out to her. She's absolutely available. Um, and so she has informed all of this, and we keep in close contact. Um, her, right now, she's looking at some of our processes and policies through an equitable lens, because that was something that in her second contract that came to the board, we talked about building that internal capacity. And then, um, you know, if the board decides that they would like to take this on the road and show the equity statement beyond those, some of those community meetings that we had done, um, at the end of last month, then she can help inform that plan so that we can execute it. So she's absolutely available to do those things. She's on through June 30th. Um, but again, I think we also just want to make sure that we're building internal capacity to be able to have these conversations and support you as a board, as you continue this work in whatever way, shape or form you decide makes the most sense moving forward.
Ms. Bormeri, just, let me just take it to another step. So I would like to see the contract of that second person that you say that's helping us now. There is another person. I haven't seen that.
Yes.
And I think that's important for us, because when people are looking at us today, they think that we're just working in isolation in here.
Right.
And we're putting together things to hurt children. And that is not true, when I heard that today. And we've heard that for the last few weeks. And this is why we've got to go back, because if it takes, uh, if these seven words is going to, uh, harm what we're trying to do with the mission, because of all the people who are in anxiety, because they feel that we're actually talking about, you know, uh, some other plan in mind to destroy, that's not what it's all about. And I felt hurt and harmed today when I heard people feeling like we were trying to get their children, and here we are, the school board. We've, many of us have been here. It's our responsibility to make sure that every child is successful, not just with this equity statement, but with actions to make a difference uh, in the lives of each and every boy and girl. And we don't want to hurt anybody. That's why I think people need to know the full picture of who's been working with the board and how we got here. And we have to revise and do some things to make it better so we can come together. So much, uh, division in the country now. We have to come together on behalf of all the wonderful students and families that we have here in the Palm Beach County School District, so we can move with this equity work. We don't want to have pushback from parents and others, because they feel like we're not all on the same page. That's why I just really wanted to take a minute for people to know that apparently, you have a second consultant. The first consultant had been working with us. We've all been trying to work through these pieces, but it's obvious from all this time that we've spent today that there's a lot of misunderstanding, there's a lot of hurt. Uh, people feel their children are being, uh, not, uh, taken care of by this school board of Palm Beach County. So we've got to own that and figure out what to do. And I think we have to come together.
And just to elaborate on- And just to elaborate on one, Mr. Tierney said, we do not have a contract with Insight. They're providing their services for free based on the TSL grant that Human Resources Department secured. And I know we shared that back in January when we were going over Critical Structures Strategic Plan. But we'll share more information. They were actually going to be here today. But since we postponed that workshop, they're going to try and join us virtually next week. But we will do a better job of making sure everybody understands who's supporting us in this work.
And I think it's for the board and for the community to know that we're all working together. Because right now, there is a feeling out there that we're not working on the betterment for every child. And that's what we're talking about. We know where our faults are based on where we need to move to move our children to success. But we know that we have parents and we have children for this whole Palm Beach County. And this equity means for every child to move them to a level of success. Thank you.
Before there's a response from staff, I think, Mr. Barber, were you recognizing me next?
I'm sorry, Ms. Brill was right ahead of you, Mrs. McQuinn. Did you want to respond?
No. Sorry, Mrs. McQuinn.
Okay, Ms. Brill, then Mrs. McQuinn, then Mrs. Whitfield.
Thank you. And first of all, I want to thank you so much for bringing us the data again because it's good to be talking about student achievement. That's what we're here for and to make sure that all students succeed. I will make one comment on the data. I've repeatedly asked for this and I don't know what the problem is. But I've been asked by the community, the Haitian community specifically, they would like to see the data broken out for the Haitian community. And I've brought this up at each time we've had the data. So if there's a reason why we can't do that, if you could please share it so that I can share it back, I would appreciate it. So I have to first of all, thank everybody that came. Regardless of what your perspective was, it's very clear that what I brought up last week, the speakers illustrated and the emails have illustrated the divisiveness and polarization that is caused by some of the words in our equity statement. No one group should be made to feel less than any other or disenfranchised. Now, some of the people wanted just to remove the words that I had suggested the last time, the dismantling structures rooted in white advantage and, just that sentence. Others suggested the whole paragraph. I personally don't think, you know, that we need to dissect the whole statement. I think that it's, as I said last week, by removing the reference to white advantage, we still make a very strong statement. But I just want to say that equity is not just about race, right? We've talked about it. We've talked about all the other groups. It's about reaching all those students, as Mrs. Andrews said, about working together. The whole goal, my vision, was that we would have a statement that would bring everybody together so we could talk about making sure that every student is able to be successful. I mean, that's what we're all about. I do want to close my comments with sharing something that one of the people that wrote to us had stated at the end of her email, Sherry Delaney from Belglade ended her message to the board. And I cut and pasted this out to read it. She said, "When considering equity, please consider carefully how your words and actions can negatively impact children and staff in your schools. Please find a balance that does not create a divide and cause harm. Please consider that in your efforts to create equity, are you then punishing one race and causing division?" And I thought that was very profound, so I wanted to share that. And that's the end of my comments for the moment.
Mrs. McQuinn?
First of all, I do appreciate all of your work. Thank you. And that was not intended to be a reprimand. I just wanted to get my voice in there. So forgive me if that sounded like one. It wasn't. I am not going to address the equity statement right now. What I want to address is Mary Fertakis. She did not impose herself on us. We invited her. And she's been more than generous with her time. At no time did Ms. Fertakis try to lead our thinking. Sometimes she tried to slow us down in our thinking. She did quiz us down a few times about whether we should socialize this before we voted on it. And please remember, this is not a policy. This is a statement that we can amend. But I personally did not want to socialize at first because for me, virtual meeting, I had two people. Two people contacted me about why I didn't have a virtual meeting. One was a principal who was worried about my health. Another was a community member. And he and I've had several conversations by phone and email. I know that my community does not work best virtually. And I will be following up with school-specific conversations about how we move forward. But I really feel very strongly about defending Mary Fertakis. Thank you.
Mrs. Whitfield?
I just had a question for Mrs. Andrews because she kept saying seven words. And I wanted to know which seven words. Okay, okay. So I just wanted to make sure I was on the same page. So she's talking about dismantling structures rooted in white advantage and.
Go ahead, Mrs. Andrews.
I just want to say to Ms. McQuinn, I think Mary Fertakis came in here and worked with us. I'm just talking about like today, when we had so much discussion, it would have been wonderful to have her here as a resource. People were talking to us and they were saying that they felt like we may have been having an ulterior motive for what we were doing. And that's not true for any of us. And I thought today would have been a great day since she has been our consultant, been working with us, that she could have been here to kind of share some viewpoints as to some of the things that she had talked to us about. Because we did spend a lot of time. And all the time that we spent, I really didn't feel that we would be hurting people the way I heard the hurt today. And I heard many people say they supported it. But when we have, we're not coming together as one for the benefit of the children, then it causes me to take notice. And I just thought she would have been helpful to us to have her here today to give some comments. Because people do learn and that's what we did. We learned from her. That's why we hired her as a consultant, the superintendent did. And we heard her as she worked with us over the weeks and we came up with these words. We know that action is going to be needed. A lot of work has to be done to help many of the children here in Palm Beach County. But today would have been a good day to have her. That's why I just wanted to know when we are moving forward and we're talking through a lot of these issues, if we have the resources there so people will know. The board is being guided and working together with folks who've had some experiences maybe that we haven't had. Thank you.
To follow up on Mrs. Andrews, I think it's only fair to say that, you know, that the board, we didn't ask for her to be here today. In hindsight, maybe it would have been great to have her here so she could have, she's probably listening anyway, so she could have helped us with what we have to do here today. But we, you know, we didn't ask you to do that. And, you know, again, follow up on Mrs. Andrews. It would have been great to have her today, but she, you know, it's not your fault she's not here. We didn't ask for, we didn't ask for it. Again, in hindsight, it would have been great if we would have, but we didn't. So Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. Well, I did ask for Mary Fertakis to be here today. I was told that she was unavailable. But, and I do think because we're kind of in our, almost in our infancy as a board in addressing this particular difficult topic that we could have benefited from her experience as part of our dialogue. But, so I have a few comments that may seem a bit disjointed, but I'm going to say them anyway. So first off, one of my favorite quotes is, "You must learn to look for yourself, hear for yourself, and think for yourself or you will find yourself loving your enemies and hating your friends." And I think that that is a point because there's been so much misinformation. There's this psychological term called transference, where emotions and the organizing system of the patient is attributed to the therapist. And this applies in many areas, right? In this case, in my mind, I just, I'm concerned each time somebody brings up the Nazis. And we've been called Nazis. But some of what I see going on is similar to what I learned about the rise of Hitler. And it's frightening. And so I'm really good if we can, if we disagree on the facts. I hate when there's disagreement around misinformation or misunderstanding. And so maybe part of it, and maybe that's what Ms. Fertakis was trying to tell us when she asked about socializing it, is that we need to talk to people more so that they understand because there's clearly, there were a lot of things said. There was nowhere near what I was talking about, right? Or what I thought that we as a collective, we were talking about. I hope that we don't allow people to divide us. We as a board have looked at data. We've looked at our processes. We've had these workshops with lots of discussion. And I thought that as a collective, we accepted the need to change our system to address the needs of the least of us, not to the exclusion of anyone else, right? And that's why I kept talking about this portrait of a graduate. Where is it we're trying to go? What is the minimum? And I want to be clear, minimum in terms of success that we want for each of our graduates. And any child who surpasses that, God bless them, I applaud them, right? But I think that we have to set some expectations. And then we figure out how we work towards that. And we do look at each child, each and every child. And when I did my little town hall meeting, I said, and I mean this with all my heart, one of the things that I was most proud of in our statements is that we changed from talking about all children to each child. Because that's, that's when we really, when we really make progress. And guess what? It doesn't matter what the child looks like, right? But our statistics tell us that our system tends to not develop the human capital in certain children, right? And so I think that's what that was about. I don't need to go back into, into history or even into things. I mean, some of the obstacles in our system have changed over time. But the data's nowhere near as good as we want. And guess what? And I've said this from this diocese, we're not doing a good enough job teaching white children, right? So we just need to do better. If we focus on the needs of those with fewest blessings, we will address the needs of all children. And that's what I thought we were talking about. And I want to just address a couple of things that just bug me out with the misinformation. Teaching any race of children that they are not good, that's not part of anything that we've talked about or that I imagined. I can't imagine anybody on this diocese would accept anything like that. Teaching children that this country is bad, no. Guess what? I'm trying to make this country live up to its promise, right? So yes, we want every child to have a chance at the American dream, right? And no, we're not going to either explicitly, what I'm hoping we end is the implicit messages to some children that you can't succeed. And we're not talking about, I'm not talking about, teaching any of this stuff to children. It's the adults whose minds I hope we change. We all grew up in systems that affirm certain people and deny the realities of others, right? And adults, now, we carry that with us. We carry the biases that we learn. Many speakers said, children don't have these biases. I agree. They'll learn them though if we don't change the adults in our system. And that's what I'm hoping to change. One of the, a teacher emailed and said, it's essential that we educate, not indoctrinate our children. Absolutely, absolutely. And somebody said, there was this accusation, we keep trying, they keep saying that we want to teach children critical race theory. No. But as one of the speakers said, I want to teach them critical thinking. Exactly. And how to find the facts for yourself. Because there's so much misinformation out there for children and adults. You could run down any rabbit hole and be absolutely certain you're correct. And so one of the things we have to do is teach young people how to verify what they think is facts, right? So that the next generation doesn't operate on so much misinformation. Somebody said, we're teaching black and brown children to be victims. No. I hope to work to make sure that they're not victims. And that we're teaching children to see children by race. No. We want the adults to stop treating children based on whichever kind of ism is in the forefront of their brain at the moment. And there's many isms. But this country was founded on racial bias, okay? And that's just the truth. I'm, I just, I want us to stop that. And I think it is, we can, we can save this country and the next generation by making sure that the adults free their minds and stop operating out of their own implicit or explicit bias. And that's what I, that's what I thought we were saying in our equity statement mission and vision. Thank you.
So let me add my two cents, I guess. The definition of equity is on the district's homepage. And I'll just remind everybody what it says. It says, "Equity means each student, regardless of race, ethnicity, poverty, disability, language status, undocumented status, religious affiliation, gender identity, and sexual orientation will have access to the opportunities, resources, and support they need to imagine, nurture, and achieve their dreams." I believe removing barriers that many children face is the core mission of this entire board. I believe the idea of an equity statement was to follow that definition and get the entire school district behind the critical work that needs to be done. Equity, to me, is removing those barriers standing in the path of a child's success and distributing, and I want to clarify one word that we definitely need to change, distributing, not redistributing, which connotes taking from one child and giving to another, district resources, whether they be staff, programs, or funding, to ensure every child, no matter their race, ethnicity, and all those other, all those other obstacles that might be in a child's way, are removed so that the child receives the education that they deserve, an education which allows each child to attain or achieve their highest personal potential. Not every kid is going to come out the same. We can't do that. It's not a possibility. But we need to remove the barriers that don't allow any child or restrict any child from reaching the highest potential that child has within him or her. It's obvious that when children come to us, they're not equal. You know, the framers of the Constitution said, all men are created equal. Well, that's not true. We all know it. Some kids are born with cognitive difficulties. Some kids are born with other issues. And even if they're born perfectly the same as the baby in the next bassinet, then when they get to us, things have changed, right? A poor child that may be white, black, or Hispanic and can't read, when that child enrolls in our school through no fault of his or her own, needs additional resources to help that child get up to speed so he or she can move forward with his or her education. Would the taxpayers of this county support our schools, who support our schools not want us to provide additional reading support to a child simply because the other children who are reading on grade level are not being provided the same support? Providing those additional resources removes barriers for that child to a meaningful education. That is an example of equity as opposed to equality. A child comes to us suffering from cognitive impairment. That child is far behind his peers due to his disability. Without additional resources provided to that child, which his peers don't need, educating the child will be a failure. Would the taxpayers who support our schools say that providing that child with additional help without giving that same equal help to his peers who do not need that help, is that wrong? That is equity, not equality, that dictates the need to give additional support to that child. Just ask our teachers. They get 20 kids in their classroom. Do they treat every child exactly the same and just give them the same lesson plans? Or do they give special attention to some children in the classroom that need special attention? That's equity. That's not equality. Equality would be, you all got the same homework assignment. You all come back tomorrow and take the test. And we don't care whether you get As, Bs, Cs, or Ds. You're all being treated the same. That's not, that's not what we do in the schools. That's not what we, what our mission is. The taxpayers don't want us to treat every child equal. They want to make sure that every child gets the resources that they provided with their vote, those tax dollars. We allocate those tax dollars to make sure that no matter where the child stands when they get to us, we can make sure that they get what they need to get them up there where they need to go and for, you know, for a profitable and successful future. We live in a challenging times with more focus on what divides us than what unites us. I mean, it's obvious, the country is at a place where, in my 71 years, I've never seen anything like this in my life. Even back in the 60s, when there was all the turmoil then, it seems like that was nothing and walk in the park compared to what we're dealing with today. We are tasked with educating our children. Anything that inhibits us from that task is mission creep. The intent in approving an equity statement should be about bringing forth unity, not the division and polarization that was unintended consequence of our current statement, due only to the words that we chose. If there's more discussion about the words we use than the reading scores, the math scores and the graduation rates of our children, the process has totally failed. It is clear at this point that we are at that situation. The words have become the issue. That's all the public is focusing on, is the words. They've totally missed out on our mission, which is to provide a quality education to all children and give them the resources that they need from the tax dollars that they provided to make sure those kids are successful. Yeah, the issues of race and equity are profound. They deeply impact our community. But our job first and foremost is to create a safe, healthy space where we can teach the next generation to read, write, add and ultimately be prepared to enter college or the workforce with the knowledge and skillset they need to succeed. We can clearly see that after today's meeting, if we don't do something to take away the words that cause all the distrust, we're not going to be able to move forward. I mean, we're going to have them constantly come to the meetings blasting us thinking that we're on some mission to change the, you know, change the whatever in this country, to change us from a democracy to a socialistic state. I mean, I haven't seen any of that. We've never had any discussions with staff to come here and tell us what they're, I mean, I certainly would have recognized if staff was telling us, hey, we're going to change how we teach this to something that I would find profoundly untenable, which is, you know, socialistic tendencies and trying to indoctrinate children on something that their parents don't feel is appropriate for them. And as Dr. Robinson said, I think it was you, Dr. Robinson, the issue is not the kids here. It's trying to get the adults to understand what our mission is. And they need to understand that, you know, when we talk about equity, we're not talking about critical race theory. We're talking about allocating resources in a way that every child gets what they need in order to succeed. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment. I think listening to the board and obviously the community, what I find interesting about my reality as superintendent on the board, I've been in the year and a half, you know, COVID. I've sat at this dais and been called Hitler and a Nazi by a bunch of black people. I've been called a racist by a bunch of white people. You know, and it's very interesting to me. You know, I'm a proud son of a man who spent 22 years in the US military. I grew up on military bases my entire life. And so the idea of socialism and communism to me is just insulting. You know, my dad almost died in wars. And as a young child, I had to witness that. And so, but I'll say this, the words, yes, they're polarizing. Let me tell you something. If we don't put actions in place to deal with the data that we have been looking at for many, many years, before I got here, and now that I'm here and the old strategic plan is expiring, we have a new one ahead of us, but the data's not lying. The data's not polarized, the data's not political. The data is absolutely truthful. And so our goal, I think, what has been missed, and we can do an analysis of what was missed and why people are so polarized around this, but here's the hard truth. We have students that are disabled, we have students that are black, we have students that are poor, we have students of any demographic that you can imagine that have not been fully served by the school district. And again, and we don't know all the reasons and that's why we need to dig deep into that. But our end goal is what the old mission and vision was. Every kid, every single kid. And I think, but we also have to acknowledge, we have to acknowledge that every parent can't advocate. And part of our role as a board, as staff, is to figure out what each child needs to be successful. We're in a moment in time, whether you like it or hate it, we are starting to get resources to begin to address this in a way that we don't have to take anything from anyone. And all my years in education, 22 years, I've said this one phrase. And people who know me well know this, they call it a phenomism. We have to raise the floor and the ceiling simultaneously. And with that floor though, we have to accelerate it. So I'm not ever going to say, my son's a gifted kid. And he didn't, we didn't pay someone, a psychologist to do that. He did that on his own. He didn't do it because of me, because I'm not that smart. His mother is very, very smart. But I will say this, y'all, we have to raise the floor and the ceiling simultaneously. But we have to accelerate that bottom. And so I think we're just in a moment in time. Only thing I ask is that at some point, we have to create the plan, execute that plan and monitor that plan. I think Mr. Barber and everyone else is right. We're talking about adult issues, we're not talking about kid issues, y'all. And so we've got to be brave and bold with our own teams. And then truthfully, we've got to work with the community on this. We can't, you know, over the years, we've put so much on public education that sometimes we don't ever get to talk about educating. We talk about everything else. Now, we have to embrace that because that's just the moment in time that we're in. So the mental health work, you know, the new work Mr. Oswald is going to be doing with equity and all these pieces, these are necessary. These are things that this board asks us to do, things that I believe in. Now, we still have to figure it all out, we still have to build these teams. But we can't do this without a plan. We cannot do this work without a significant plan based on all the data that we're looking at today because the data is not political. The data is just facts.
Mrs. McQuinn?
I got that on freeze my screen. Whoops, sorry. So, Dr. Robinson, I don't want this to get lost. You know I say this with all respect, but usually she says things with a lot of words and this was said with so few words. I don't want us to lose this. This isn't about what we're teaching the kids. This is about, this is for adults. And, you know, we've had a five-year strategic plan. This all started, why do we have an equity statement? We have to do our strategic plan. Well, all the data knows, and I'm referring specifically to black students right now, we know that they significantly, a large majority, underperform our white students. Well, five years of grandiose plans haven't made that much better. So what are we going to do differently? That's where all this started. So please don't lose this. This isn't about bringing this to our kids. Thank you.
Ms. Ayala, then Mrs. Whitfield?
Thank you. Wanted to touch back to the Mary Furtakis situation. I believe her second contract was passed unanimously on consent on May 5th, if I'm recalling. So the contract is there available for all of us to see and we all knew she wouldn't be here today as well. But today, more importantly, we heard from other elected officials, partner organizations, community organizations, community leaders, parents, faith leaders that represent the fabric of Palm Beach County. And many of those folks asked us to stand by our words and not retreat right now. I have 225 emails and counting in my inbox over the last week that is requesting to keep the statement as it is. That's from parents, that's from retired teachers, that's from teachers currently working in our district, that's from students. And I'm going to go through the list of organizations that I've heard from including that. United Way of Palm Beach County, the Palm Health Foundation, Compass Community Center, the Anti-Defamation League, Primetime Palm Beach County, the Guatemalan Maya Center, Community Partners, Families First of Palm Beach County, the Coalition for Black Student Achievement, the Palm Beach County Human Rights Council, Organizing Against Racism PBC Alliance, Healthier Neighbors, a National Association of Social Workers representative was here today, various clergy, a state legislator, university professors, including two from FAU, students, parents, and even a student petition from the National Honor Society president at Atlantic High School named Darrell, asking for the racism and the discrimination in his school to end. Okay? So now is not the time, in my opinion, to go back and forth on wording. We've invested over 20 hours already doing that. Now is the time to work on what the superintendent just said. How are we as the district leaders who are tasked with the work Mary Furtakis guided us through? We are the district leaders, not her. Her being here today wouldn't have made a decision moving forward on what we're going to do, how we're going to instruct our team to do the job of equity. What does that mean to us? We have to hold firm in what our values are. We need to focus on defining the goal of what this means to us and share that with our educational leaders in our schools to make sure that they can have clarity on the task of executing the vision as well as to all the concerned parents all over the county who are here today expressing their confusion and their anger and their frustration over what we released without a plan. So that's, that's the reality. And frankly, we owe that to our educators to have, give them the tools to be successful at this. We can't give them a losing proposition and expect it to succeed. And we can't back up when we have some little resistance right out of the gate. The statement isn't even a month old. And we're getting pushback, which we knew we would get. At the workshop, we all said, we know this is going to be hard. We have to do the hard work now of committing to what we said, what we all agreed to, what we all approved on consent on May 5th without hesitation or discussion, and give our system the roadmap and the tools to make sure that we can increase the academic outcomes we all want to see increased for every single student we serve. I firmly stand with the statement as it is.
Mrs. Whitfield, then Ms. Brill, then Ms. Andrews.
I just wanted to talk really briefly about the disunity in the community. I am very frustrated and saddened by it and by the people who believe that we are trying to hurt their children as well. I think this is a real impact of the pandemic. I think the fact that we haven't had a chance to talk to people the way that we used to, meet with people, see each other, be eye to eye, you know, go to meetings. So I think that, you know, going forward, when we decide to do anything, I really think we should make an effort to socialize it. And trying to get the word out to communities is really important because I don't want anyone to think in our community that we don't hear them or that their voice is not heard and important to us. Because this is, one of the things that I like most about this board is because we are a nonpartisan organization who really is there for all the children in the community. It makes me very happy to be on the side of looking out for children and children are just who they are and we're going to help them. So I don't want anyone in the community to think that we don't hear them. And I think that hopefully as we go forward in our post-pandemic life, things will start getting better and we can have better communication. But I would like us in the future to make sure that we bring everything out to the community. I think we've learned that the community will come find us if we don't. So we need to make sure that we bring things to them first. Thanks.
Ms. Brill?
Thank you. So I have to disagree with Ms. Ayala because words matter. And the words in our equity statement are, that's a separate issue to the work that we have ahead. Changing the words is not going to change the direction that we take. We know what we need to do. We know that we have to provide the resources to make sure that all of our children succeed. Something that I fought for for many years. It's still, we're a lot better than we were with our students with disabilities, but we're not there yet. We still have a lot of work to do. But it was very clear, it's not just people that came to us supporting the words the way they are. There were many people that were saying that they did not support the words as they are. We've made it clear that we want the words that are in our statement. Yes, we need to socialize it, but they have to be words people understand. And I still remember, I had a phone call this week from one parent who called me up who has four children in the schools. And she said to me, I have two children that are biracial. She said, I'm white. She said, I don't want my middle school student coming home and telling me that I had an advantage over him. You know, those are the things that these words bring, they bring up in people's minds, no matter what you do. And so you need to understand that it is dividing the community, it is polarizing. The words on our equity statement don't change. I do like what Mr. Barbieri said in the second paragraph at the end, saying, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias and distributing resources. Taking out the redistributing and make it distributing. I think that that's a very good change to have. But there is absolutely no change in our intent and our direction by removing the words dismantling structures rooted in white advantage. Because those are the words that are a trigger. And I want this community to embrace the work that we're doing. But, you know, absolutely, we have not been discussing critical race theory. We are talking about bringing up and providing the resources to all students so that they can be successful in school and in life beyond. And this is critical work. But to have a statement that divides and hurts so many people. I did have one parent that called me crying, asking me where her white advantage was. And those are the things that, and yes, it is an adult problem. But it is, but if we put this out the way it is, it's dividing, it's not uniting. Let's all work together to improve student achievement without offending, misleading, or dividing, or polarizing, or disenfranchising, or making any one group feel less than any other group.
Mrs. Andrews, then Dr. Robinson?
And thank you. And I just want to say, you know, I work really hard in District 6 and it's truly not about me, but one of my areas is an area that we've been working on for years since I was elected to the board. And I recognize the shortcomings that we have faced within this school district. I know that best of all because I'm in my car, out there on the ground. And I've been on this school board a long time. So when I hear somebody saying that we got to stick with it, when I hear parents that I heard today and I've heard over the last week, really disgusted about just our message. When we look at our equity definition and our equity statement, it's beautiful. Except for that, those seven words that I was talking about. We don't want this to go down because we have to stick with something. If we lose one parent, it's too many parents. We want all of the parents to work with us, to help us with all of these children that we're talking about we need to help. It is going to be our responsibility as a board. It's been our responsibility as a board to do what we needed to do to bring these children out. And I've been working, and all of you have been working at it, and working at it hard. But when we have this kind of divisiveness that I saw in here tonight, and I saw a little bit of it last week, and it's out there, we've got to find a way to stop that and to get back on track. It is about the action. I know about action and getting things done. In my years on the school board, I've taken a lot of action to make a difference for the quality of life and education for many children, and you all have too. And so we know about action. This is words right now. And it's, and we can do better than that. We don't have to say, you know, it's a group out there that's out there saying bad things and they're screaming and hollering. They're doing that for their children and they truly believe, Dr. Robinson, what they're saying. So truly, it is about helping the adults come around. But when you don't try to come together to help them with that, because we didn't go out there with them to get their opinion on the front end. I mean, we were all in those meetings and we didn't do that. But guess what? I've learned something from sitting here, that we should have done that piece and gone out there to do the socialization with them. And we would have got more information and we would have known, hey, move back a little bit. But we did not do that. But we're here up in here today and it really truly is about each child, every child. I don't care what color you are. We want them to be successful. And I say that every day that I come in here and wherever I go is that what we want is to make sure that they're successful. And every parent wants what success means to their individual child. So when they come in here and talk about the critical race theory and all these things that you all are talking about that we heard today, that's not what we're talking about. But until we can reach out and bond and educate them and let them know what we're truly all about, then we're going to miss some kids. And we can't afford to miss anybody. Ms. Whitfield, I hear you when you say that. It is the mold right now here in Palm Beach County that's not good because of all of this misinformation and confusion. We've got to make sure that we can dial it down a little bit and get back on track so that we can do all these beautiful things that we have written here in our equity definition, equity statement, so we can move forward. And we want to bring every parent along. We don't want to leave any behind. And we truly don't want to leave any students behind.
Dr. Robinson?
It's a fascinating conversation. I mean, it's as if we weren't leaving some people behind or disenfranchising some parents or having some parents be upset before, right? And that's borne out in statistics. So what I have gotten for years and years and years is unhappy parents. Not all black or brown, but probably the majority, right? And so like, what we have to do is what's right. Not necessarily what's popular. What would you do if you went to your doctor? And your doctor said, well, what do you want me to give you? How do you want me to treat you for that condition? I kind of think you'd be disappointed. I kind of think you might want their professional expertise to weigh in. Maybe be a thought partner with you and talk about the pros and cons. You know, and I don't think it's just about these seven words, if it's seven words, right? It's something underlying that. And I think, you know, many of us may recognize that. But the point of the matter is, we did all agree to it, to these words. We workshopped them, I think twice. And then it was on the agenda in the workshop. I remember I specifically asked, are you good with this? Because there will be some pushback. Now, you know, everybody can change their mind and each one of us has a vote. I would suggest, if it's not out of order, I'm going to make a motion to close the workshop so we can get to the meeting and be done with this. Because nothing's going to change with all this talking we're doing. Because nothing's going to change with all this talking we're doing.
Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything else for us for the workshop?
No, sir. We don't have anything else.
Right. Dr. Robinson made a motion to adjourn the workshop, said we have a second. Motion by Mrs. Whitfield. Long in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. And I'll call the special meeting of the board to order.
We'll have it open just in case.
Are there any disclosures or abstentions for this meeting? Seeing none. We have any agenda item speakers? So the only item on here is BRD 1. I recommend the board discuss and, as desired, take action to modify, amend, or repeal the equity statement adopted by the board on May 5th, 2021. Motion by Ms. Brill, seconded by Mrs. McQuinn. Discussion. Ms. Brill.
Thank you. So I'm going to suggest a change in the language in the second paragraph with one change, as I mentioned before, the, the word that Mr. Barbieri suggested, so that the second paragraph would read, "Achieving racial equity requires proactive and continuous investment in historically marginalized groups who have endured centuries of systemic oppression. The school district of Palm Beach County is committed to transforming our system by hearing and elevated underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, and distributing resources to provide equitable outcomes." So that's the removal of the seven words, plus removing the RE in front of the word distributing.
Ms. Andrews.
I concur with Ms. Brill on that. I do believe this will help us to move forward, to bring the community together, to bring all the children and their families together. And yes, we all said this is what we wanted, but guess what? We've learned. And I have to repeat, every day is a learning process. You can't be right all the time. So when we sat there and we felt like this is what we wanted, but we have heard, we've heard from parents on both sides, and we know that as a district, we have to come together as one for the benefit of each child. And so, Ms. Brill, I, I love it, because I was worried about those seven words, and I like Mr. Barbieri's distributing, because it's for every child to get what they need, each individual child. And when we look at our equity definition and statement, everything else, I think we can move out of this room tonight on a good note that everybody will be working together. Maybe there might be other underlying things, but guess what? We know now, we have to get to our communities and socialize this and talk with them, to let them know that we're all out here for every child. And for those statements that they said in there, they're not true, and we don't mind meeting them wherever they are to talk about how we're going to move forward in this school district, to make sure that we have equitable outcomes for each and every child. And we want all those parents to be along with us as we move forward.
I'd like, she was the second, yeah, she was the second.
I can second that, yes.
Yes, you second that. So I just want to follow up on a couple of things that were actually said at the workshop that we are now discussing to, on this motion. Dr. Robinson said that there's something underlying those seven words. What those seven words do is they bring that underlying whatever to the surface. As long as that underlying issue is on the surface, we are not going to be able to move forward and get any work done, because we're going to alienate people that we need to support us. We, and with respect to Ms. Ayala, I appreciate the fact that there were lots of groups who supported keeping the statement the way it is. But I would say to you, if those, those are great organizations, and if some of those organizations were here today and would have heard, would have disconnected from what people believed that, what, what the words mean, and we asked them, would you rather leave the words or try and, try and bring the community together so everybody is working for the benefit of children? I think that many of those organizations would have probably said, let's forget the words, and let's get to work on the job and get it done. And if that means we have to change some of the wording, but we're still looking at the children that need our resources, including black children and Hispanic children, ESE children, ELL children, I think those organizations would probably say, it's not worth the fight over words when you guys aren't going to get the work done, because you're not going to get the community support that we're absolutely going to need on the strategic plan. We're absolutely going to need the support of the taxpayers when we go back to them for more money, if we have to do that, when the referendum comes due, and when the sales tax issue comes up. We have to make sure we have community buy-in on this. And at this point, let's not focus on, on keeping the words at the expense of losing the community support. So I would hope that you all agree that we, we need to modify and get, get those words out of there, with the understanding that taking those words out still leaves the statement, basically, as Ms. Brill said, very powerful, and it gets the job done. Mrs. McQuinn, and then Dr. Robinson.
I am going to end up supporting the amendment, but I want to explain why. Because we have, we've created winners and losers here. There's a lot more in the winning, but the sentence, the first sentence of the second paragraph, where we say, "Achieving racial equity requires proactive and continuous investment in historically marginalized groups who have endured centuries of systemic oppression." That's a big statement. So I can live with this.
Dr. Robinson.
So just, so we're clear, there's, there are many people who thought for a fleeting moment, it was, it was like, like Camelot, that we were actually going to work towards what every child needs. I hear us saying that even if these words get changed, that's what we're still going to do. Okay? And what they're saying to me is, yeah, right, we'll see. Okay? That's what they're saying. So be very clear that we can't make everyone happy. And those organizations that Ms. Ayala listed represent many, many voices that we never hear, right? And so, you know, it's just, once again, it's like we're, we're choosing between adults instead of focusing on the needs of the children in Palm Beach County. And so, you know, I mean, it, it is what it is. You know, unfortunately, it, you know, it just kind of, the more things change, sometimes the more they seem to remain the same. And I know that's what I'm going to be hearing over and over and over again. And so I hope we prove them to be wrong, and I fully expect all the people that had all that misinformation, that we prove them to be wrong too.
If I just may follow up on Dr. Robinson. Dr. Robinson, I, I understand where you're coming from, and I don't think removing those words takes us out of Camelot, as you described it. I mean, if you look at the fourth paragraph, it says, "The school district of Palm Beach County acknowledges the existence of and will eliminate systems, processes, and mindsets that perpetuate race, ethnicity, poverty, disability, language status, undocumented status, religious affiliation, gender identity, and sexual orientation as predictors of achievement." I mean, it's clear in this, this statement that all the other paragraphs, including that one, get to the heart of what we're trying to accomplish here, which is to get all the resources that children need to those children. The, the removal of those words doesn't change that. And I, you know, not, you've been fighting, you've been fighting for, 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 you know, marginalized children and, you know, and, and underrepresented children your entire time in the school board. And I think we've come a long way. I mean, this statement is something that I never would have imagined that we would get to, and it does the trick without putting the words in there that is going to keep those people on that side of the room from coming to help us when we need their help. So I would just like to, you know, get, get this done so that we can move on and get to the strategic planning that we need to get in place. We have summer school that's got to start. We don't even know exactly how we're doing that. We certainly need to discuss how the school year is going to open up next year, and parents want to know whether, all the things that we got to do, we've not got to that. So we need to move on and get beyond filling the room with lots of people that are going to scream at us about words so that we can actually take action. I believe you were next, Ms. Ayala, and then Ms. Brill.
Just, do we really think that changing a few words is where the divisiveness and the screaming ends? Do we genuinely, I, I just, I'll put it out there into the universe, because it's not going to stop. When do we stop catering to the loudest group and start doing what the organizations that we work with in conjunction to serve the most needed, the most necessary population of students and the most marginalized communities in our system? When do we partner with them and back them up? Because with all due respect, they can speak for themselves, and today they did. They sent emails. They came in and spoke. They took time out to be here and make sure that communities that we want to see elevated in support are. And these are words. Words are words until they become actions, but words mean something to people. And I've heard from my constituents, every one of which reached out to me, supported this. So I know where I firmly stand on this. I know that this is the right thing. We will, it'll be what it'll be. I will see what the vote comes out to be on our decision moving forward. But everyone who came here today, and I wasn't saying the ones who disagreed with it weren't counted in my tally of emails, but the majority of speakers today, per my tally, were in support of keeping it as it is. And I had more emails in support of the statement as it is, as opposed to. So that's my count, to make that clear, to a, a board member's comment about listening to everybody. I just think that we need to be very careful about remembering, why did we put the words there in the first place? I believed, we all believed in them when we put them there.
Ms. Ayala? I'm sorry, Ms. Brill.
Thank you. So first of all, Dr. Robinson, I have to be positive. I have to be focused on us as being the ones that are responsible to do the job. I trust in my heart that what you said is not going to be true. I have to believe we have reached a point where we are truly going to focus on equity, on making sure that all of the resources are where they need to be, and that we raise our children up. And that, and so I will say that in reading the entire equity statement, those groups that came supporting the words the way it is, they are, I believe if they read it, once we remove those words, it's, it's no less powerful, as Mr. Barbieri said. And it's up to us, it's up to the district, to the superintendent, to come back with curriculum. We need, at every single board meeting, to discuss the data and to discuss student achievement. At our regular board meeting, it should be on our agenda. We need to start talking about where our students are instead of talking about the adults. So I put that out there. My original comment was to discuss the change in the verbiage. So I'm now going to make a formal motion that we change the second paragraph to read as follows. Achieving racial equity requires proactive and continuous investment in historically marginalized groups who have endured centuries of systemic oppression. The school district of Palm Beach County is committed to transforming our system by hearing and elevating underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, and distributing resources to provide equitable outcomes.
That was an amendment to the motion on the table. Is there a second? Ms. Andrews? Any further discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motion is approved with Dr. Robinson, Mrs. Whitfield, and Ms. Ayala in opposition. Motion carries 4-3. I don't believe we have anything else on the agenda today. Ms. Andrews, do you have a comment?
Thank you. I didn't get a chance to say this, but it's important that I say this. Congratulations to all of the Dwyer Award winners last night. 450 nominees, 28 finalists, and seven winners. And I just want to call the winners' names out, all the people who applied, worked hard for the Dwyer Awards. Jana Smith from Gulf, La Quandra, Golf from Roland Green, Andrew Kennedy from Congress, Carla Little Griffith from Glade Central, Benjamin Ford from Gulf Elementary, and Mari Amanda Orseno from Glade Central, and Cindy White from Elbridge Gale. Hooray for our teachers. Thank you to the Education, the Economic Council of Palm Beach County for always doing a great job for our teachers. Congratulations to all of the Dwyer Award participants. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Motion to, Ms. Brill?
Thank you. I wanted to, first of all, thank Mrs. Andrews for bringing that up, and thank you to the Economic Council. I thought they did a fabulous job. Thank you to the, to the Hanley Foundation, the, the main sponsor. It was a wonderful event. The one thing we didn't get accomplished today is talking about where we go from here in terms of the equity statement. And so, you know, we've talked about, we want to socialize it. I think we're going to need to have a discussion at a later meeting, because we can't just drop the, the conversation, and we're not going to move forward. So I don't know if we want to, by a knot of heads, discuss if we would like to have another workshop to, to have more information. So I'm putting that out there.
Are you talking about another workshop for the strategic, so we can more, start moving on the strategic plan?
I, if I may, I'm thinking, maybe prior to having the strategic plan workshop, we can just talk about what our expectations are in terms of, of the equity work, if you want to have more conversations, because that was on the agenda, and we, we really just blew it off when we closed the workshop.
Can we, Mr. Superintendent, through the superintendent, can we, can we add that discussion at the beginning of the next strategic plan workshop that you all have?
We can, and we planned on surveying the board after this workshop to kind of decide, to determine what direction we want to go regarding updates on equity specifically, in addition to strategic plan.
I think if you can also just allow us time, so if we can send that one-on-one survey, see, see what's up, what direction, and then we can have a more informed conversation, if that's okay with y'all, because next week is going to be very busy, and I just want to be sure we give it the time and space. So just asking for that concession. If not, we'll make it work.
Yeah, I think we need to, we need to work with the board, but our agenda for next week is really, really packed, so I would prefer not to try to cram this in, and just kind of stick with our, and then we'll figure out a way to bring it back.
Ms. Brill?
And if I may, so whenever we do get to that, when we start talking about the socialization, let's work together also on how we meet with the communities. I'm hopeful that we can meet in person in our communities, because I had mentioned that my, my community really struggled with the format, you know, that we used. And I want us to be able to go out, meet with the community, and be able to, to get their support, because I do truly believe that the community supports this work that we're embarking on. Thank you.
We'll bring back some ideas. So thank you for the extra time.
Okay, we need a motion for all the board members leave to adjourn. So motion by Ms. Brill, seconded by Ms. Andrews. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.